Yeah.
Not like open, but.
Feeling.
It's gonna be a.
Are born in August.
All the meetings are. And. The evidence of.
The county board of supervisors, July nineteenth meeting notice and agenda was posted in the government center building in two places. Posted on the county website on Friday, July eighth, twenty twenty-two, and was published in a legal newspaper for the week of July eleventh, twenty twenty-two, and was published on July thirteenth. In addition, on July eighth, twenty twenty-two, at eight thirty-six a.m., the office of the county clerk distributed copies of such notice of meeting to supervisors and media via email or mail. The notice of amended agenda was posted in the government center, posted on the county website, and copies of such notice of meeting were distributed to the supervisors and media via email Friday, July fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, at three fifteen p.m.
That's sound cause one.
They comply.
Local.
Brad Olson.
You're.
Doug Rowdy.
You're.
Steve Wardall.
You're.
Ryan Wood.
Here.
Tracy LeBlanc.
You're.
Dan Rock.
Here.
Barbara McAfee.
Here.
Sharon Kelly.
Here.
Tim O'Connell.
Here.
Amy Middleton.
Here.
Jay Luke.
Here.
Denise Lalié-Pray.
Here.
Russ Harkamp.
You're.
D.J. Simmons.
Here.
And John Vanna Price.
Here.
All fifteen supervisors are present.
Okay, let's stand in. Let's release this flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In motion on the agenda. To care, I move for a definite amended agenda. Motion made and seconded. All in favor.
Aye.
And I oppose, name, sign. We, uh. Matters that are offered for for adoption on the consent agenda. Two items there. Need a motion on them.
Make a motion?
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote, same side. Public comment. Do we have public comment? Anybody up there? Wherever they are.
I have no one here in the other room for public comment.
No one?
Nope, no one.
Are you outside more?
No, I'm down here. I got a call from two folks. I've had two calls. Well, uh, there might be some confusion as to where where we are.
Well, that's probably where they are.
It could be they're up in the, I don't know, they got into the old guardhouse, but.
Well, I mean, this filling the room over here. Oh.
Well, we're.
Nobody's there. She's late.
Well, let's. Hold it on. We'll just hold it off on it. If anybody shows up, we'll, uh. Accommodate him. Need a motion on the resolution thirty-five for the Department of Code funding for electrical medical records. Uh. Anybody? Who sponsored that one? That was, that would be me. You did. You want to? Explain that one to us? I think I think pretty well understand it, but.
Yes. This is. Do we need a motion?
We need a motion for. Yeah, I need a motion for the, uh. For the resolution. Move for adoption. Motion made and seconded to adopt.
This is something that both Tanya and Scott Good, our I.T. director, have requested. And it is for electronic medical record software. The main thing that, and it's actually being encouraged by the state, uh, that we go with this firm. And as a result, they're offering a grant, as his health partners, offering a grant that will pay for. So it's a, it's probably a hundred and twenty. There may be some transition fees that could go up a little bit higher, but it won't cost the county anything. But this is a budget amendment. We'll need two-thirds vote because it's not in the budget, but it is grant money that's coming. Uh. It will replace two different softwares that don't interface well together. Uh, in addition, they're, they've uncovered security issues with it. So when you're dealing with electronic medical records, you have to stay on top of that. What they're finding is those other two, they're a little slow. So I fully support this and and, uh, it is actually two thousand a year less than our current licensing agreements now. So the grant will pay for the initial startup and the and the software, and then it'll be a couple of thousand a year less going forward.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions in reference to that?
What? I just said, what, what is the cost of a license per year?
Forty-six thousand dollars.
Forty-six.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, forty-four thousand a year. And the the current ones that we're paying are about forty-six thousand a year.
So that's what has to get put into the budget for next year then for a yearly?
Yes, the old one already is. The forty-six thousand, so this is a continuation of that, only two thousand less. And actually, next year, it will not, will not have it because, uh, this startup fee of a hundred fifty thousand covers first year.
Okay. We needed two-thirds vote to accept a grant?
To accept a budget amendment because this wasn't in the original budget. It's grant money, but we still have to come before the board to notify you, and and that takes a two-thirds vote.
Okay, so is the, the. Okay, so this will be funded by the grant. This isn't a, this isn't something where we write a check out to and then get seat reimbursement from the state. It's contemporaneous.
No, I think this is, and I, and I could be wrong in the mechanics, but this money is is actually already, uh, accepted.
Oh.
For the group health grant. And workforce development grant from the state.
Okay. And this is medical records, so this is designed to interface or be part of the universal medical records coding?
Yes, because we have behavioral health, which treats people, and we also have.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions? I'll need a roll call vote.
Dan Rock.
Yes.
Barbara McAfee.
Yes.
Sharon Kelly.
Yes.
Tim O'Connell.
Yes.
Amy Middleton.
Yes.
Denise Lalié-Pray.
Yes.
Russ Harkamp.
No.
D.J. Simmons.
Yes.
John Vanna Price.
Yes.
Brad Olson.
Yes.
Doug Rowdy.
Yeah.
Steve Wardall.
Yes.
Ryan Wood.
Yes.
And Tracy LeBlanc.
Yes.
Fourteen. But makes two-thirds.
Yes.
Negative. Got a presentation via Zoom on this sports complex. We also have a. Your information in reference to what we're going to be listening to. Have we got that ready or what?
Yes, if I could just set the table a little bit real quickly here. If you recall, many of you saw the draft version of this.
Right.
Before the election. Uh. We kind of gave a quick overview, but before the official version was to be presented and having the SFA representatives here, he said, let's wait till a new board takes seat. And so that they can get their feet wet and then kind of look at this. Uh, also, in that meantime, if you recall, Terry Power of the EDC became the point person to lead any investigation on this. And so I've asked Terry to, or he is taking over from here to introduce the the speaker.
Okay.
You're good.
You're good, okay.
Sorry, I was just making sure the technology works there. Um, so we're going to be presenting, uh, here, but I just wanted to thank the board for allowing the Polk County EDC to take on this important initiative for the county. For those of you that haven't met me yet or newly seated on the board, Terry Howard, uh, hopefully I've met just about everybody. I don't think we've met, but, uh, just about everybody at various meetings throughout, uh, the last few months. And, uh, I'm the executive director of the Polk County Economic Health Corporation. So this is a big initiative for the county, but it's also can have big impact. Increased community events and outreach, uh, positive activity for youth, uh, employee attraction and retention. And also, it actually pays the county back over with tax benefits over the years of ownership. So some of that is covered in the report, but I'm going to turn it over to the two experts that we have online here. Susie Fisher is the, uh, one that we've been, uh, talking with the most and kind of spearheaded this effort for Polk County. And she's the account executive and project manager for us. And Jim Arnold is, uh, along with her, and he's the national director of business development. So I will turn it over to you guys, and we'll have some time for questions at the end.
Excellent, thank you, Terry. Um, if you could enable the, um, participant screen sharing, I'm, I'm happy to put my screen up for you, please. Perfect. Uh, yeah, that's not what you want. Here we are, can everyone see my screen? It's got a big basketball on it. Yes, no?
Yeah.
Oh.
No, okay. How about now?
Yeah.
Excellent, wonderful. Well, thank you, Terry, Mander Netherland supervisors. Thank you for having Jim and I with you via Zoom tonight. We're very excited to share this information. And I was in the county last fall and have been in communication with Vince and Terry, and I want to thank Tim for all of his work as well, um, up until this time. So if it's okay with you, I'm going to jump right into the presentation. Jim and I are going to tag team this, and then we'll be happy to answer questions at the end. Uh, just a little bit about us, again, Susie Fisher Reader, and with, I'm an account executive. I'm with sports facilities companies. We're based out of Clearwater, Florida, founded in two thousand and three, and our main mission is really to help improve the health and economic vitality of the communities that we serve. Uh, my background is twenty-five years in local government, twenty-plus of that in parks and recreation, and the last five or so in city administration. Uh, Jim is a partner with the organization. I'm going to let him just do his quick intro, and then we'll jump into the slides.
Thanks, Susie, and and great to meet everybody tonight. Appreciate you having us. Uh, as Susie mentioned, I'm a partner with the firm. Uh, I've been in the youth sports, uh, tourism recreation space for twenty years, um, overseeing, uh, and running companies such as Ripken Baseball, uh, Sports Fields, Inc., uh, and then came over to sports facilities companies a little over two years ago, uh, to continue to help drive the mission that Susie mentioned earlier. So I'm going to turn it back over because I know you guys are more excited to hear about our, uh, the report and what we found than my background, but looking forward to, uh, hearing what you guys think and answering any questions you might have.
And I know we are limited, um, on time, and I'm very conscious of that with all of my times that I I had to sit up there on the dais with you. And so I'm going to run through the slides, and again, we'll open it up to questions. Just a quick, um, agenda for us. I'll review our scope of work, the definitions of success that we worked on with the stakeholder groups while we were in market. Uh, review the two models that we developed for you, community-focused model and a regional destination model. A brief overview of a high-level site analysis, and then some reaction discussion, and then the next steps. So our scope of work had four steps with you. First was a kickoff call, existing data review and market analysis, that in-person market visit, the development planning session that we held there with your city and or your county staff. Um, and the other individuals that they included, the site tour, and then various stakeholder meetings. Today, we're presenting to you the market opportunity and our recommended facility report. Um, it is still technically in draft form. It is able to be, um, altered if additional information comes to light that we just haven't hit yet. So first and foremost, definitions of success. This is what we heard while we were in market. You really are looking for something that creates a significant driver of economic impact, is features diverse and flexible programming space. Wants to improve the access and connectivity of your local recreational assets, but enhances the quality of life of the community. And finally, leverage those revenue generating opportunities to limit ongoing subsidy requirements. So we took a look at what the core participants were or could be as a potential in your market. And so understanding basketball, soccer, volleyball, all of the potential items that people could play or the could market could, um, draw. We look at what that thirty-minute draw is, sixty, ninety, and two-forty. So that thirty-minute draw is your local population draw, two-forty more of that regional draw. Looking at court-based sports alone, you could have a potential of gathering somewhere between twenty-three thousand, up to one-point-two million participants that could come to the facility for either local programming or that regional tournament programming. We then looked at what are those existing service providers locally? So we look at seventy different providers in various different, um, aspects of sports. So courts, ice, indoor turf, fitness programs, events and conference centers, rock climbing facilities, biathlon and cross-country ski facilities, equestrian and rodeo facilities, and ATV and UTV facilities. So those were the main items that we heard during that development as needs in your community. There are about seventy facilities within that local market, and you can see the drive times next to that as well, um, that are there for your current existing population to use. We then looked at what does that two-forty area market look like? And you've got forty regional tournament facilities, and I highlighted just two, but the report has additional as well. I highlighted the court and tournament facilities, and I highlighted the ice facilities. Because as we looked at what that potential participant draw could be, those were the two areas that had the largest potential market capture for you were courts and ice. And those were both items that we heard while we were in market. Regional events, so that's that two-forty again draw. There are about two-hundred-and-seventy-five tournaments that take place within your regional draw. That's in courts, ice, volleyball, again, just so that you can see where they are, what their proximity and range is to you. Because they could be potential competition if you look at a regional tournament-type facility. And so we developed two models for you. And the first we we developed really because while in market, we heard a need, a need for court space, a need for indoor turf space. For those teams that are right there on that cusp timeframe, that winter-spring timeframe that don't get to practice, your school teams, your local teams, because the weather is just too unstable. A need for ice. We've got kids going and playing in outdoor ice, traveling a great distance, so we heard there's a a need for ice. Family entertainment and virtual reality. That's just an, an asset that we include. Your market doesn't necessarily have that, but it's a great draw to bring people into your facilities. That very flexible classroom multipurpose space, a concession snack bar, and then we call it leased medical or leased space, but it's also, we heard that outpost space. Depending on where you decide or if you decide to build something, it could be a connectivity with your trail system and how you work that as maybe a lease bike space or a lease type of outpost space. So roughly a hundred and fifty-one thousand square feet, six-hundred-and-seven parking spaces. We do anticipate, and in the next, I'll show you the estimate, we do use paved parking, but we understand that that may change, and that could be different in each market, um, depending on what your codes allow for parking. So roughly eleven acres for that community model. Now, you're all going to hold your chest, I know, when you see the next slide. The next slide is the estimate. So again, construction costs are very high, but understanding today's construction market to build all of that in that community model, we're looking about thirty-seven million dollars. It does not include the cost of land. It does not include any type of soft cost of operations or working capital, but that's to build that estimate, to build that first community model. Okay, so then we looked at what does a regional model look like? What is that item that could bring people in, that could spark additional development, could spark, um, tournaments? What does that look like? So to be competitive in your market, a destination model would include six basketball courts. Those could be cross-lined, twelve volleyball, twelve pickleball, a full-size indoor turf. So you can accommodate two youth fields, three small-sided fields, that baseball softball infield, and then additional batting cages, two ice rinks. The, again, the same family entertainment center that, aside from a draw for your local community during tournament times, that provides an excellent place for brother-sister to go and play while the tournament is going on. Again, those same multipurpose classrooms, that very flexible space, the medical lease or the lease space, again, that could be that outpost idea. So you're looking almost double in size, just under three-hundred thousand, about two-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand square feet. Again, double or almost double the parking spaces because the size did double, so right around twenty-one acres. Now, not a huge surprise from the previous slide. This one is, again, almost double the cost, but it is double the size. So about sixty-seven and a half million dollars in this destination model. Again, that's all in, and no one says that you have to go all in, but that's to give you an idea of what that could look like. So you say, how much money would we make on one of these? So here's just a comparison for you. Understanding that, one, the community model is focused on just that, community and local programming. How do you work to increase the wellness and health of your community? So understanding that we're probably in that ten-to-twenty-five-dollar range, square foot range for revenue per square foot. So somewhere about one-point-five on the low end, up to about three-point-seven million on the high end for revenue in that community model. Now, understanding the regional model, you say, well, wouldn't we make more money? Well, the regional model is overbuilt for the local community, so you still have to do that local community programming to support that regional model. So you're looking somewhere between two-point-nine and seven-point-two million dollars in potential revenue that the facility could generate. What does that look like for economic impact? So we really look at assets in the facility. So the community impact model would have three assets, those two courts and that one ice rink. The additional items are there as well, but they're not necessarily that draw where you could host a local tournament or you could host a local, um, ice rink hockey competition. So three assets on the low side, about one-point-five million in economic impact, on the high side, potentially six. Now, again, you're all doubling, over-doubling the assets with the larger model. So again, about four million, up to sixteen, a potential of sixteen million dollars in economic impact back into your community. So we looked at five sites, uh, St. Croix Falls, Village of Osceola, Awesome Lake, Village of Dresser, and the City of Amory. And really, this is just a comparison. These two slides are just a comparison so that you can see them. So we look at population, we look at median age, the household income of the area, and then what that traffic count looks like. So that traffic count really tells us what that accessibility is of those general locations. So as you can see, St. Croix Falls, the first one, has a lot of location and accessibility. The hotel rooms are there with eighty-plus hotel rooms. It's got connections to your trails. Village of Osceola, easy access to Minnesota, that property that could be available located near that Osceola Medical Center. The Village of Awesome Lake, again, limited try, a limited volume in traffic, so limited access, but access again to trails with lodging, including the lodge at Awesome Lake. Still items to consider that they each have below the median age of income except for, or for median age. Median age in the U.S. is thirty-eight-point-five. So this is, we look at the thirty-eight-point-two, thirty-seven-point-four. Those are wonderful numbers, understanding that younger people typically have more children that could be then involved in some of those younger sport-type programs. You get a little older, when you look at Awesome Lake, Village of Dresser down to thirty-seven, and Amory is at thirty-nine-point-five. So again, Dresser, you've got a potential population draw within that sixty minutes of about one-point-seven million people. It's got consistent traffic volume. It's got access to other amenities like trail hogging and recreational properties. It does have limited lodging. And then the City of Amory, again, sixty-minute draw, it's further away, only seven-hundred-and-twenty or so thousand people within that sixty-minute draw. It, it does have additional access items, right? Access to three lakes, a river, your trails, and some lodging availability. I don't know where my slide went, Jim?
I can, uh.
This is. It's showing, but it's not showing on the screen.
All right, well, let me see. I can see if I can share really quick, and if not, I can run through, uh, I can see if my memory, how good my memory is. Um, let me, you know, I can, this will stop other shares, let me see. Can you guys see this? Does it show up? Oh, interesting, it doesn't show up on the presentation. So I'm gonna, you'll get, you'll get a sneak peek at the other slides, um, as we go through. So really quick, uh, you know, what I want to do is run through, I know Terry had asked for some examples of of where we're seeing these facilities get funded. Uh, in this list, and you guys can see the list on this version, right?
Yes.
Okay, so it, this just gives an overview of of kind of the most common that we're seeing. Um, and, you know, we have facilities that we'll show you in a little bit that utilize just one of these. Uh, we have facilities that utilize a, a, a good amount of these and combined funds. Uh, the answer to what funds make the most sense, a lot of times lie in in two areas. One is what type of facility, uh, you know, local use versus economic impact, um, you know, especially those two areas. And then secondarily, what the overall need is and the ability of the community to create these, uh, funding mechanisms. So items such as TIF districts, you know, does one already exist? Can it be created? Uh, so I would say from an economic impact standpoint, when we're developing facilities that are driving visitation, we're seeing right now a lot of hotel motel tax, uh, inclusion. Seeing a lot of food and beverage tax inclusion. Uh, medical sector partners is probably the biggest private side, uh, equity that's coming to the table because of how many touch points medical partners have in these type of facilities, especially regional, uh, infrastructure hospitals. Uh, because that drive time that Susie mentioned, a lot of time matches up with regional draw hospitals. Uh, as well as I'd say recently, uh, the ARPA funds are starting to come more and more into play as communities understand a little bit more on how they can use those funds. Uh, whereas I think when it initially came out, sports was not necessarily something that got tied in. Uh, we're seeing that start to change a bit over the past six to nine months. And then when you start getting into more community-centered, uh, uh, facilities, we're starting to see some of the more, uh, park bonds, uh, local, uh, local tax, general, just straight general obligation bonds. Because those facilities are so much more centered on community and local resident activation than what you might see in a, in a tournament facility. So really quick, and we, and we'll make sure that you guys have this full, I think you might have this whole presentation, but obviously, if you, if you don't, we'll make sure you have it. Um, Cedar Point Sports Center, uh, relatively close to you guys, uh, designed as a, as a local use as well as a large tournament and impact generating facility. Uh, you see there, we, we kind of put together hotel tax, medical partner. There was private equity at the table there with the amusement park partner, and then city tax financing, uh, closed the gap on that facility. Uh, public sports park, uh, that's actually in Panama City Beach, uh, uh, Florida, not Appleton, uh, but a hundred-and-sixty-eight acre outdoor park. For the most part, fully funded through a hotel motel tax, um, that, you know, the sole purpose of this facility was to drive room nights. Midway Station in Bedford Park, just outside Chicago, uh, really nice example of a mixture of funds. Uh, so they created a TIF district, uh, that it's kind of outside Midway Airport, uh, so created a TIF district, drove sixteen million. Hotel motel tax, uh, right now is generating eight, and then they had a capital projects budget with, and that was much larger, but they allocated eight million dollars of that to the facility. Uh, Champion Center in Appleton, uh, hotel motel tax was the main driver there. And this is, I kind of sped through those because I wanted to get to this one because this is a great example of the difference in, uh, some of these economic impact generating facilities versus public use. Uh, Bridgeport, West Virginia brought us on, they created the Bridge Sports Facility and Recreation Center. This was, they, we run some tournaments there, but this was a huge focus on local use, huge growing community, a lot of people moving into the area because of oil and medical. Uh, and this was actually funded out of their general obligation bonds because they knew this was a resource that their community needed, and as they grew bigger and bigger, uh, they needed to, you know, they would need even more and more. And then the last two I'll show you because this looks at, uh, Sevier County, Tennessee. Uh, they actually funded two different facilities, an indoor facility, Rocky Top Sports World, uh, that they funded through a hotel tax as well as a reallocation of debt that was retired on their convention center. And then a couple of years later, they went back and used their food and beverage tax to fund an outdoor, uh, facility. And so that, obviously, they have a lot going for them as a tourism destination that those taxes drive this type of dollar figure, but they were actually able to leverage different taxes in different areas. And so I know I threw a lot at you, uh, really quickly, but I know, uh, the time we're up against, be happy to answer any questions, uh, about that that you guys may have.
About any of these, what are they?
About any of these, what are they generating for money right now? See that last one you just put up, how much are they generating?
So the, so the Ripken Experience, I believe, is in the four to six million dollar range revenue, uh, per year. Um, somewhere, somewhere in there. Now, we, that's obviously a private, uh, uh, operation that's in place there. So I don't, I don't have their actual numbers. Um, Susie, do you know, uh, from, uh, from any of the ones we have given you, we can get you those ranges for sure. Uh, because all the other ones I showed you were venues that we manage on behalf of public entities. Um, so we will be able to get you, uh, some of that information.
Yeah, happy to provide that information. I'll get that to Terry. So can you see the considerations and insights on the screen? Perfect. Okay. So I just want to put out there that we analyzed the possibility initially of a high-intensity, multi-use, multi-season off-road adventure racing, UTV ATV, that really came to the top of a need um, during our process. And we were informed that you are already doing that with your Polk County Trails Advisory Group. So if you're questioning, why don't we have that? Kudos to you guys for already identifying that as we were in the process. And we also considered equine-based tourism. I know that came out as one of the really big conversations during some of the stakeholder meetings. You already have a facility that is doing that. And so we don't encourage competing, developing, competing type facilities with something that you already support, both financially and it's in your community. Aquatics came up and it was noted by the stakeholders. Again, with the cost of aquatics is astronomical. Uh, but due to declines in some of the swimming trends, um, and some of the new potential COVID, post-COVID regulations, not really going to encourage you at this point to, that would really jump the cost a lot and probably not give you the return on investment that you were looking for. And finally, just based on the local demographics and the regional sports persist, participation data, indoor courts represented the best asset type to really bring you the volume of players, both locally and regionally. With basketball, volleyball, pickleball, with the turf field, you could do indoor and outdoor or indoor training in the fall. And then again, in the spring and summer. And finally, ice, um, with almost sixty thousand ice participants in a sixty-mile radius and two hundred and eleven in a forty-mile radius. It really does support that need for ice that we heard while we were in your community. And so you may ask, what are our next steps? Well, our contract is done after this and any, you know, updates to the draft that we need to make. Um, so I'm going to kind of turn it over to Jim on the next steps, but we do have a phase two. It's a detailed financial forecast pro forma, an economic impact analysis, an optimized facility program and business model. Uh, but really just to explore those potential funding mechanisms, the development incentives with Terry and continue with the site selection and assessment.
Yep, absolutely. And, and we, do you want to end that?
Yep.
We can all see our, our lovely faces. Uh, so you know, I think the easiest way to explain it, and I believe Terry, you may have this proposal. We'll, we'll get it to you again if you need it in terms of phase two. Um, but what, what Susie and the team have put together right now is really kind of what I always like to explain is creating broad brushstrokes. Um, showing you the ranges of where things can end up saying, hey, if we fall within this range, is this a project that you're comfortable exploring in more detail? Um, and, and, and I say that with both, you know, we don't, maybe you don't know yet whether you want the community to, uh, direction or, or the economic impact direction. And that's what this next phase really does. It takes those broad brushstrokes of ranges and drills down to fine details. Um, you know, who's in the venue on Tuesday night at eight o'clock and how much are they paying? And so we create in this next phase, we drive into all those conversations that the team has had thus far with users. And we start putting real schedules, real rates, real programs into an institutional-grade pro forma. And the goal of that is to get down to a ten, to a five, 10 and 20-year outlook of what this venue looks like from a revenue, expense, cost of goods sold, facility and operating expenses, as well as the look at the economic impact so that we can have all of the information in front of us to make informed, to help you make informed decisions on moving forward. And a lot of that information is what we use, going back to all of those financing, uh, options that we looked at. Because that pro forma, along with the debt service and understanding the sustainability of the operations, is going to help us understand what financing we need to put in place and what the best options are that are available to Polk County. Uh, so we've got, it's broken up. We've kind of brought that broken up into, uh, a few steps. It's the detailed financial forecast that I discussed, a full economic impact analysis. Uh, there is a feasibility report, uh, there that we can look at. There's two options. We could do a full report. Uh, or we could do a presentation. Uh, you know, the presentation takes us a little bit less time and it so brings costs down. But if you need the full report, we're, we're certainly able to do that as well. And then if, uh, if so desired, when we come through that as part of this phase or potentially as part of a third phase, uh, we'd also include options to look at site concept designs and initial kind of conceptual renderings of what the facilities could look like. Um, and I would say, I, I would almost recommend only entering into that if it's something you want to put in front of the community at some point. Um, you know, we can show you examples of facilities and things like that without going into that next phase. Uh, if people are saying, hey, what could this look like? But that's also an option that we provided that could be on the table.
We have another question here. Denise, did you have a question?
Yes, um, under the ice facilities and on a number of, um, locations, uh, the Amory Ice Arena, in addition to the Nurichman and the Scooter, which are, are both probably as far as the Minnesota facilities are, and I was just wondering why they weren't included in, in the.
So I, I don't think they're included in the slides, but they should be included in the appendix as well. Um, if not, we can update that, but I know we did look at those facilities as well.
Go ahead.
We can definitely update that if for some reason they got left out.
It could be that this is in your phase two discussion and it probably depends on whether you look at the community or the regional model. But is there any range, like a high-level range of the number of entry level or professional level jobs that are involved in a facility like this?
So that is actually in our second, um, level, uh, our second phase. It's included in the pro forma. We really break down each model and include those operational performance and on those operational positions, whether they're full-time or part-time or contracted. Um, that is included in that second phase of financial feasibility.
I have another question. When you reference drive time, it's drive time from where?
So it's drive time from the central point, um, of those locations, right? So it would be the drive time from the central point of Amory or the central point of Dresser, somewhere in that middle section of the location. So it's not a specific parcel. We didn't identify specific parcels, so it would be just that center point of the area.
I am just a little confused because like, for example, on the indoor court facilities on the local one, it says, um, Chisago Drive Time fifteen minutes, Wildcat Community Center sixteen minutes, St. Croix Falls High School Gym seventeen minutes.
Sure. So for that one, we actually used the, for the main, we used just the county building. So the county building for Polk County.
It's mixed up then because St. Croix Falls is way closer than the Chisago Gym. I mean, it's just little things like that I noticed.
Yeah, well, and it's actually not, it's, it's not road time. It's as the pro flies drive time as well. So that's the, that could be some of the other, but I'll be happy to update that in the report so that it's clear.
Could you help me understand again why, uh, there's, you're planning here, whether it's, whether it's the community focus or the regional, there is, there's no outdoor venues at all?
So that's not, the outdoor venues, the, what we looked at and what we were charged with is really that three hundred and sixty-five use. And an outdoor venue would have limited use with you, with your season. So an indoor venue was our, our primary focus to address that consistent three hundred and sixty-five type use.
So, so this doesn't even account for even if that's something we decide we want, that, that can't be accounted for in this.
Well, in this study, it is, it is not included. It is something that we could add if you are looking for fields, multipurpose or diamond speed fields. Uh, but again, that would not hit that, um, vision of success, those definitions of success that really we're looking to drive the local wellness opportunity and the economic impact opportunity.
And that's something, if you guys identified those fields in the second phase, that's something we could very easily build into the pro formas and create the operating plans with them as part of, you know, it's not someone we'd say, hey, in order to put that in, it's extra. We would include that in the analysis if you guys identified those needs at, at, at no additional cost.
Right, Terry.
Can I ask a question quick?
One more question, sorry.
Can you help me understand, um, I'm trying to understand the market opportunity section? When we're looking at towns in like Sioux Falls, South Dakota and Ames, Iowa, or, I don't know, Kansas, anyway, some towns in Iowa. Is this graph that we're looking at this table saying that we would be competing with people and people would be willing to drive to Polk County from Sioux Falls? Or instead of going to Sioux Falls and instead of going to whatever, Bellevue, Iowa, it just seems so far away.
It is. Yes, but that is that regional tournament draw. And so typically people are willing to drive that two hundred and forty-minute timeframe to get to a regional tournament. So while it does seem far away, that is, those are places that people are willing to drive to within your market.
Terry?
Yeah, so, um, even the pad kids or ass kids, you know, those tournaments and stuff can be absolutely crazy. You spend your whole weekend traveling down those streets. So, grandkids, that's right. You gotta go see those too. So thank you all for presenting. I would just like to say as far as next steps, you know, the EDC appreciates being in charge of this, uh, at this point and trying to just at least keep the ball moving down the field. I will be developing a committee, which I will want at least one board member on. Um, and then there's, you know, as I travel throughout the county regularly, employers, the employees, uh, families, healthcare providers, everyone that I talk to about this is enthusiastic about it. So I do think it's something that's worth pursuing. I don't think it should just be dropped. Uh, but we do have a lot of late work. This is nothing that's going to be accomplished overnight. Um, so I'll get my committee together and then maybe we can come up with some proposals and working with, uh, the team here to get those next steps and what that next step for that feasibility study would end up being, uh, involved for the county. So thank you all very much.
Thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation. Okay, we're moving on to a, uh, audit. Presentation.
We thought we would have here as the final audit, everything's prepared, bring it to general government and so on. Um, but things got delayed and so Jonathan is just offering to come on and get the, the presentation tonight.
Did everybody hear me? Okay?
Yes.
All right, fantastic. Um, and if I have the option, I don't know if the, the board there, before I get started with my comments, uh, if they can see the handout that I had prepared, otherwise I can share my screen as well and walk through my, uh, my handout. Full disclosure, my, my presentation won't be as exciting as the one that we just heard. My audio visuals don't even have pictures, so I apologize for that. Um, if I can grab, um, sharing capabilities, I can share my screen if that's possible.
You should have that.
All right, it's perfect. Hopefully you can see my PDF here. Excellent. Okay. Uh, well, just to get things started again, my name is Jonathan Sherwood. I'm a manager with Clifton Larson Allen. Um, I recognize a few familiar faces, a few familiar names on the board there, uh, to any, any of the, um, supervisors that don't know me. I've been in charge of the, uh, the day-to-day, the field work of the Polk County Audit for quite a few, quite a few years now. Um, worked very closely with Chad, um, as well as Maggie back in those days. Um, basically the ins and outs of quite a few, the goings-on at Polk County over the years. Um, so just to, before I get into some of the numbers there, I want to just highlight a few things. Uh, first, I just want to express my thanks and appreciation to administration, all of the department heads that, uh, myself and my team, um, kind of go out there and, and kind of get in the way of for a few weeks there just to present and be able to, be able to compile the financial statements. Uh, it's quite a heavy lift, especially in those days when we have COVID restrictions that we're working around. Uh, transition from, you know, um, different positions are turning over, such as, uh, the recent transition that we've had there, uh, which kind of led to some of our delays that we're experiencing here. Um, as well as kind of some of the, the other curveballs that we get to experience with federal funding that comes down the pipeline, such as the ARPA funding. Um, some of the ever-changing requirements that we need to make sure that we're in compliance with and we're reporting those correctly back to those agencies. So I appreciate all of that. Um, one of the reasons like I stated is, is we are presenting, these numbers are in draft format. Um, so my, um, caveat there is, um, it's basically, uh, a draft of the full financial statements and the presentation of those numbers. I do not anticipate any of the numbers or the, the amounts that I'm going to be presenting. Um, none of them should change to, you know, in, in any major capacity that would impact any decision-making, um, going forward at this point. So, um, I feel, I feel very confident with all the balances that I'll be presenting for you, um, tonight. Um, some of the other things that we do as part of our audit is we obviously issue our audit opinion. Um, that's the only part of the audit's report that actually belongs to CLA. So, um, as things are sitting right now, we will be issuing an unmodified or a clean opinion over the amounts and disclosures of the financial statements. So it's the highest level of assurance that we can place, uh, from an independent auditor's perspective. Um, that's what we're, our goal is, and that's what we're striving for. Um, and happy to re-report at this point that we, we for sure will be able to issue an unmodified opinion. Um, the other thing that Polk County does, uh, annually is, um, they submit their financial statements for what's now known as an ACTFOR. Uh, it's an annual, um, award process through the, uh, GFOA, which is the Government Financer's Office. Um, so it's basically just a, a really good gold star over the financial statements and budgeting process of Polk County. Um, you get a, you get an award and a certificate that goes along with it that looks very good to other, uh, reporting agencies that, that review and accept your financial statements. So that's still in process and we will be submitting for that, uh, as well. Uh, as well as the, um, in compliance with federal regulations, uh, we need to file what's known as a, uh, data collection form for single audit purposes. That's as a result of all the federal funding that flows through the county. So that's all also still in process. Um, some of the other things that CLA does as well, uh, as part of the audit, as part of the audit process, we file, um, both an unaudited and an audited version of the, uh, financial report form with the state of Wisconsin, with the Department of Revenue. Uh, we also assist in the highway closing report, uh, with the Department of Transportation. Um, and then the last thing, obviously, like I just stated, there's that submission for the data collection form. So all that being said, I can dive into some of our lovely numbers here for you. Actually, sorry, let me back up. Um, as part of our audit as well, we take a look at the internal control structure of the county. Um, basically your checks and balances throughout the financial system to see, you know, if there's anything that would be a mistake or any impropriety, how well would the county's internal controls detect that, stop that and prevent that from happening? So a, as, as we evaluate these internal controls, there are certain items that would raise to a specific level that would, um, if, if it becomes an issue or a significant deficiency or a material weakness, um, I'm required by accounting standards to make that known and obviously make that presentation to the board in a setting such as this. So throughout our audit and our, our review of the internal control structure, we did notice there's two items that we are going to be reporting. These are repeat items that are very, very common for a county your size. Uh, the first is material audit adjustments. That being said, it's, you know, through the course of our audit work, we've detected or, or proposing, uh, adjustments to the county's books in order to make sure that the amounts and disclosures are in accordance with accounting guidelines. Very, very common thing that we do. Um, again, this isn't anything new, but the county is not just now experiencing in the current year. The other one is a limited segregation of duties. So we have to take a look at the county in, in total, in its, in its whole, and then also down at the, the granular department level. So if there's any financial transactions or financial things that are only split between one or two people, even at the very smallest levels, um, obviously we want to segregate those duties to as much as, as much as possible. Um, and it's kind of that, that whole switch to the general governance, uh, general government, um, structure or methodology that we're in the process of, uh, is helping alleviate some of that in, in segregating these, these duties across multiple people. Um, it, that the limited segregation of duty still exists within the county. Um, so I do want to stress that all of the review process and approving of invoices and whatnot that, or supervisors such as yourselves are going to be doing and hearing different presentations and, and the, the goings-on. Um, you as a county board member are an integral part of the internal control structure. So I just want to stress that, especially, um, when it comes to having a, a finding such as this. Um, these two items again are very, very common. Um, anybody else that would, that would see. Anybody else that would, that would see these financial statements and see these two items listed in an internal control letter or a management letter comment such as this. Again, very common and it would not impact any other funding or anything like that. It's just an ongoing items to be continued to be monitored. In response to the material audit adjustments, the finance department is continually working on those items that they can kind of keep up of. These, this is, these are the types of audit adjustments that the auditors are making every year. How do we prevent that? How can we do that instead of them in hopes of basically eliminating this audit adjustments in the future? So they're working towards that, got a little ways to go. Obviously with transition that can kind of throw a wrench into the situation as well. So I can report back next year and hopefully the total number of adjustments and the, the dollar threshold that we're proposing continues to decrease. As far as just different financial highlights for us, I can make this a little bit bigger for us. Item number one here is the general fund. So this is just all of the, the, the general day to day operations of the county that aren't legally required to be tracked anywhere else. When we're looking at the general fund, I usually have a four year trend history that's available to us here. And these are your balance sheet amounts as of twelve thirty one, twenty twenty one. And the things to kind of keep and pay attention to are any major trends that don't kind of fall in line with one year to the next and just anything that's jumping off the page. So in this case, in the twenty twenty one column, there's actually some positive things to, to highlight for you. The first item up there is the, the cash and investment balance. So the physical cash in the bank at the end of the year did significantly increase at the end of the year. A lot of that is due to the increased funding and the increased grant revenue that came into the county in the form of intergovernmental revenues. And I, I will show that in, in just a little while here. So a lot of the ARPA funding that we're hearing about. The, the revenue came in and we didn't necessarily have a lot of the identified expenditures or anything that, that took place during twenty twenty one. Obviously those conversations are continuing to happen. So those revenues and expenses will kind of impact a lot of my comments here this evening. And then as well as there was some debt refinancing that happened during the year, which freed up some capital, some liquidity there as well. So that's one of the biggest reasons why your, your cash and investments number for twenty twenty one significantly increased. The other item that did finally drop off here for you, you finally have a zero column up there is the advance to the other funds. So again, this is the general fund. It, it is kind of the, the bank, so to speak, for a lot of other operations of the county. And in this case, the Golden Age Manor, the nursing home there did fully repay their advance that had been sitting out there and being whittled its way down. Over the last seven or eight years, I think is what the total repayment history ended up being on that advance. So they're fully current with the general fund, so to speak, so that's a positive highlight as well. Overall though, looking at the general fund, when, when I get questions such as how are we doing? The, the typical big three items to really highlight here for you are these ones, are, are these items that are shaded here in gray? First is the, this is the, the fund balance category. These are, this is your equity or your reserves of the county. And your equity is broken down into a few different buckets that we have here. So the first non-spendable items, obviously we can't spend things twice or we can't spend, spend assets or resources that we haven't yet collected. So things like delinquent taxes or prepaid's, those items are already restricted in, deducted from our, our equity balance. They're not available to us any longer. Restricted balances, those are restricted items that are restricted by an outside agency such as, such as the state or a granting agency. That, that, that revenue can only be used for a very specific purpose. So you've got some restrictions that are out there. This next bucket, the committed and assigned numbers, those are budgetary carryovers that the board as well as administration has some control over. So those are carryovers that have been designated or projects that have been designated from one year to the next. And we're going to potential that we're, we're planning on spending those reserves down on a specific purpose in a future period. So all of that then leaves this unassigned fund balance number. The unaside number is your, your true reserves of the county. They're not restricted by any means. They can be used for meeting the, the upcoming or future obligations of the county or projects that was something that was just such as, was just as discussed earlier. So we take a look at your unassigned fund balance and you compare it to your total general fund expenses that, you know, basically what it actually took to run the county, the general operations for the year. So you take a look at your, just over twenty eight million dollars, compare that to your expenses of just about twenty eight million dollars for twenty twenty one. And you see that your unassigned fund balance as a percentage of general fund expenditures is actually just over a hundred percent. Which if you look at things in total, that number is at an analytic standpoint, very strong, very healthy. Typically you want to see an unassigned fund balance percentage anywhere from twenty five to thirty three percents. You know, about one to, one to six months worth of operating expenses is kind of the general rule of thumb. If somebody would see that range, you would say that this, this municipality is very, very healthy. So you can obviously see that you're well in excess of, you know, twenty five to even fifty percent, you're upwards, you're a hundred percent. And the main driving factor of that is a lot of these ARPA funds and this increased COVID funding has been basically already hit and it's already sitting in your total revenues. But again, the corresponding expenditures have not been matched up with those at this point. I know that the, the discussion of how best to spend ARPA funds is a continuing conversation. It was just again brought up in our conversation or the presentation, presentation that we had just heard about as well. So I don't want to say that at this point, it, it is not uncommon for a county in Northwest Wisconsin to have a very strong and healthy fund balance. Of all of the Wisconsin counties that CLA does, excuse me, we do about forty of them in the state of Wisconsin. And I want to say that the average that we're seeing in, in all of the counties that we're involved in. The average that we see for unassigned fund balance is anywhere from sixty to obviously well over a hundred percent. So you're definitely in the same boat, so to speak, as a lot of the neighboring communities when it comes to. How, how these funds are going to be spent down now over the next couple of years. Obviously with some fairly significant either capital projects or other items that have already been designated. So it's not one of those things, when it comes to the budgeting process here for the fall. Keep that in mind that you will be experiencing a couple of years probably of where, of adopting a budget where expenses are going to far exceed revenues. I very caution that in my experience, when boards kind of hear that, they're like, oh, great, we can basically go carte blanche and start writing some blank checks out there. Obviously, it's, it's much easier to spend down fund balance than it, than it is to kind of build that balance up. You can see, you know, over the four year trend here that I have back in the two thousand and eighteen column, you were at forty four percent. And then slowly worked your way up over a couple of years into a more healthier find, fund balance situation. And kind of here in twenty twenty one, we're in a very unique situation where there was a significant funds that hit the, you know, that hit the general, the general fund. In twenty twenty two, you are also going to get the second half of the ARPA funding just by itself. That number is four point two million dollars is going to come into the general fund as well, which will be one hundred percent recognized as revenue in that, in twenty twenty two. Any questions that anybody has on any of these figures that, that I just discussed before I jump into some of the other financial activity? Hearing none, I can keep, uh, keep my conversation going and not hold you up too much here for you this evening. The next items I can discuss for you are your special revenue funds. So these are activities that are tracked separately. And they have a specific revenue source that is limited and must be used for a specific purpose. So these are all equity balances or fund balance numbers for the end of the year. Basically, these are items that if anything is in a negative capacity, it's obviously overspent and you would hope that that negative would eventually. Through its typical operations would basically be able to, to cash flow itself and basically run as an independent activity and support itself without any further intervention needed from the general fund. So these are all balances at the end of the year. The first two that I have out here listed do have a zero balance. There is no fund balance carryover from one year to the next in these funds. So that's Children and Families and Health Services Fund. At the end of each fiscal year, there's a county policy that states that if there is a surplus or a deficit in either of these funds. That the general fund will either receive that, that surplus from that fund or cover its deficit. So Children and Families actually had a surplus of about one point one million dollars that they were able to return back to the general fund. Conversely, on the other side of the coin, Public Health or Health Services Fund, excuse me, required a transfer in of about eight hundred and one thousand dollars. So between those two departments or those two activities, in the past, these had all been reported as the Health and Human Services Fund or HHS. A number of years ago, they were split into these two separate categories to more easily or easily track those separate activities that were being taken place within those, within the one fund. So the, the good news is the, between those combined activities were able to cash flow themselves. A number of years ago, it was becoming a little bit more difficult to figure out which set of activities or which set of programming was kind of dragging those. Dragging down the reserves of the general fund. So you can definitely see that this year that, you know, it, it does net to a positive number. The general fund took in more than it had to transfer out in order to support the Health and Human Services activities of the general county. So that's a positive trend. Again, some of that might be impacted from COVID activities of more revenues coming in, especially in children and families, more revenues coming in. Then services that are able to be provided due to COVID restriction and whatnot. Some of those activities were kind of filtered down and not being allowed to operate at full capacity at, due to COVID. So keep an eye on the, the Children and Families Fund for sure. Cause I would do expect those expenses to continue to increase to pre-pandemic levels in, you know, obviously the coming years. So during budget, budgetary purpose of times, I would definitely keep an eye on those two specifically because they are the, probably the special revenue funds that most impact your general, your general fund as well. Some of the other ones that, that I can just make highlight on here for your special revenue funds, the county sales tax fund as well. That's all of the, you know, the half percent sales tax that is charged and then collected by the county. That too is also transferred over to the general fund at the end of the year. And there was a transfer out this year, the general fund picked up four point six million dollars in revenue from the county sales tax. That is also an increase from the twenty twenty dollar amount of three point nine million. So yeah, a little bit bucking the trend, I know a lot of folks thought that kind of when, again, COVID, you know, definitely impacted twenty twenty numbers. A lot of those folks stayed at home, a lot of local dollars stayed, stayed in Polk County and were spent locally. And then subsequent, a lot of the other counties in the area, you'll see that in twenty twenty one, that activity then left the county. So then the county sales tax numbers have started to come down. That is not the case in Polk County, and I think that's also not the case in a couple of the other surrounding communities. But if you look statewide at some of the other counties that are a little bit further out from Polk, the, the county sales tax numbers are starting to come down. So it, it's definitely a positive trend. The money is staying local or some of those other folks that were itching to get out of their home counties are, are coming up to Polk County and frequenting Polk County businesses. So that's a positive trend that you can continue to, to hope to see that trend continue in, in twenty twenty two. The negative item out here, the, the, that has a negative balance, this recycling fund, you can see that it was brand new in twenty twenty. That's when the, the recycling fund basically set up shop and started operating as its own independent fund. Prior to that, it was part of the general fund. So some of the setup costs and kind of the establishment to get things running over there. You can see that that was a significant deficit in twenty twenty. The positive results there is that, that deficit number is definitely drawing down. So it's only a negative twenty three thousand in twenty twenty one. So the, obviously the trend or the hope would be that in twenty twenty two, that this fund would start gaining its positive fund balance. In order to then help pay for capital replacement items and other long-term items such as that. So overall, I think that, that your special revenue funds are all trending in the right, the right direction. Nothing is going severely negative. And if anything, most of them are, are improving or breaking even from one year to the next. So all positive things there. Based on that, then I can jump over to item number three. So these are the financial results of your debt service fund. The fund balance here, again, a carryover balance. It's a restricted balance, which is needed to meet future debt service obligations. So as the county debt that's outstanding, as that debt gets extinguished and retired, these reserves should draw down and will, will end up being zero as soon as the county becomes debt free. So obviously as you have additional borrowings, like I know that there was one at the very start of twenty twenty two, your reserves here will also then go up. In order to then meet your future debt service obligations on any new issuances as well. So this number is just a little, just a little balance out there. Obviously you can't spend it for anything else besides debt service. So another little factoid or statistic that I can throw out for you for twenty twenty one. Polk County paid nine point four million dollars in principal with two hundred and fifty three thousand dollars in interest during the year. So just over nine point six million dollars in debt service requirements were, were made in twenty twenty one. The good news there is you're obviously more than capable of making your debt service obligations, which is usually a pretty big one. You want to make sure you're, you're paying your bills there. Item number four for you is your capital projects funds. So this one line item actually has three separate capital projects, capital project funds or capital projects tracked within this one number. So you can see during twenty twenty that it's, it's, it looks, looks to be, it looks to be that there's a significant, significant decrease. So there's a deficit fund balance out there. The three projects that you're looking at are the, the Government Center Project, the Grandstand Project, and then the County Parks and Trails Fund that was just newly created in twenty twenty one. The General Government Center is kind of the main reason why this line item has such a significant negative balance. And the main reason for that is because there was timing of quite a bit of the work to remodel and redo your government center there. Was all done and started in twenty twenty one. However, that previously mentioned twenty twenty two borrowing that I mentioned earlier, that didn't actually hit the county books until the very beginning. I think like literally the first one to two days of twenty twenty two. So it is kind of an accounting transaction there where your revenues didn't necessarily match up, your debt borrowing didn't match up. To a lot of the work that had been performed prior to that. So that's the reason that in twenty twenty one here, we've got a negative balance that obviously will kind of be erased as this debt balance or the, the new debt issuance will then impact twenty twenty two balances. Going forward here then, looking at our enterprise funds. So there, there is two enterprise funds, just to briefly talk about. Your enterprise funds are your business type activities is what they're known as. They operate on what's known as a full accrual basis. So previous to this conversation, there was nothing about capital assets or debt that you would see reported in any of those balances. They are now included for the purposes of the nursing home and the highway facilities. And actually I have a brief comment here for you on, on your line fund, that the transaction that took place there as well. So the, this is the nursing home information here for you. It is actually issued as a separate audit. So that one is going to be available in its own separate binder due to the additional reporting requirements that, that surround a county-owned nursing home. Really the couple of things just to highlight here, again, some of those items that you don't typically see in any of your other discussion are some non-cash items. So such as this first one here that I'm trying to highlight for you, which is your, your WRS pension related asset of one point three million dollars. So this is the, of the county's share of participation in the WRS retirement system. This now boils down to, this is Golden Age Manor's share of that pension asset. The WRS asset down in Madison, that's being, all the obligations that are out there that are, are made to the retirees are off, are obviously offset by investment balances. And in this case, the assets far exceed the amount of the liabilities at this point. So that the Wisconsin WRS system is actually fully funded and actually overfunded. So this is Golden Age Manor's share of that dollar amount. So just keep in mind that obviously that is not, that's not a balance that's available to be spent on nursing home activity. It's already been spent or basically set aside to meet the WRS retirement components of anybody that's involved in that system. Some of the other items here then quickly just to discuss is the, this item here, which is kind of, and of course my balance is here, bear with me, are not some. Let's see if I can highlight it differently for you. Here's a long-term capital, capital, a long-term note slash capital lease item, just to discuss quickly. There's only one item listed there back in twenty twenty for nine hundred and seventy three thousand dollars. That is the PPP loan that was obtained during twenty, twenty nineteen or twenty twenty was actually obtained. And then it was fully forgiven in twenty twenty one. So this nine seventy three then is now going to be recognized as revenue in your twenty twenty one numbers, which is going to skew a little bit. Of the next item that I can highlight for you here is your total change in net position down here of just over two point two million dollars. So the. Excuse me, the items that I just wanted to highlight there for you is the financial, financial performance of your nursing home is going to look very good on paper. uh for twenty twenty one specifically because of the loan forgiveness and some additional supplemental payment prom supplemental payments that were received by the nursing home facility indirect result to COVID eight uh COVID nineteen and the additional federal funding that came through. Uh so between the nine seventy three uh nine hundred and seventy three thousand as well as an additional six hundred and seven thousand of supplemental payments from um the federal government, that basically does highlight the the total amount of why your nursing home is going to take a big jump in um net position or its equity at the end of the year. Uh so that's again, adding to the bottom line during twenty twenty one. Uh again, those are kind of one-time shot in the arm type revenues that are that you're seeing there. Um and I I'm sure that you can definitely hear all of the additional struggles and challenges that your that your nursing home is seeing with increased costs, limited uh staffing availability. Um and then um. Uh the occupant occupancy is continuing to be to be down and less than it has been in prior years. A lot of the rehab stays and whatnot are not be are not occurring during twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. Um and they're not coming back as quickly as I think a lot have kind of anticipated as COVID is, you know, obviously still restricting a lot of those um optional type surgeries or um nothing is is those short time stays and rehab stays are just not occurring at the rate as they once would. Uh so other than that, there isn't too much that I can that I'll dive into dive into at this point. Uh again, there will be another uh nursing home audit. Uh and I I I typically present that to the um Human Services Board as well. Um so if there's additional questions there, I can definitely um respond back to those at that time. Uh moving forward, uh here is your lime fund activity for twenty twenty one. Um as most of you knew, obviously, the the lime fund uh operations were sold during twenty twenty one. So that's why you can basically see all the activity basically does boil down to a transfer out or this uh one point five million dollars was then transferred from the lime fund and it was transferred over to the general fund as well as that's um Parks and Rec Trails Capital Projects Fund. So that's where all of the revenue from this transaction ends up is in your general fund. Uh we simply basically just took whatever the sales price of that the the activity was, compared it to the the existing assets and whatnot that were sold. Uh and this is the resulting amount that um basically the general fund picked up. Um and then some of that money that was transferred over and earmarked for additional carryover balances in the general fund. Uh moving on to your your highway department, your highway department, so it's known as an internal service fund. It's very similar to the enterprise funds. Uh so you will still see things like your WRS pension uh related asset and your debt is um already included in these balances as well. Um items that I wanted to point out for you here in your internal service fund, um overall, what we want to look at here, bear with me if I can, my rectangle, get my rectangle going here for you. We want to look at your total net position. Uh again, this is your your reserves or your equity of your highway operations. The two numbers to kind of key or the number to key in on here is your unrestricted number here. Uh basically, when we want to look to see of everything that the the highway has done during twenty twenty one, um did we basically make some money or did we kind of uh give some back overall to the highway operations? In twenty twenty one, it looks like we basically have a slight decrease in the total amount of uh revenues that we have available uh for future periods. It is consistent with basically the pre-pandemic uh performance of the highway fund. So you've got just over three million dollars in um revenues or, you know, i- i- in fund balance that is available for for future highway projects. Um nothing too earth-chattering out there in the highway department um fund itself. Uh again, the highway closing report um has a lot more details of all of the projects and everything that were completed during the year. Um so overall, uh the operations are looking looking good. They're looking in in compliance with um, you know, as expected of everything that we're seeing that goes through your highway department. Um then the last comments that I'll make for you as far as um giving you some comments on are your um health insurance fund and then your long-term obligations. So your health insurance fund, the county has its own self-funded health insurance um for uh program, so to speak. So you you administer your own claims and you basically come up with your own premiums with the the help of your um health insurance administrator administrator. Um over the last number of years, the there's been a kind of an increased focus on the performance of your self-insurance fund. As you can see, the total amount of net position here that we have available has kind of um very in it, I I would I would basically say in my experience, this is fairly unique, where your self-insurance fund is actually very healthy and it's a very strong performer. Basically, it boils down to the the premiums that are being charged to the users, to the to the county itself and the employees. Um the premiums being charged are less than are x are uh excuse me, are are more, they're greater than the total claims that are being incurred. So basically, meaning that the self-insurance policy itself is making quite a bit of money from one year to the next. And I know, I think it goes back to maybe even three years at this point, where the county said outside consultants come in and basically come up with a plan to say, we've got basically eight point one million dollars now sitting here in twenty twenty one that can only be used for self and uh self-insurance purposes. So there's quite a bit of resources tied up in your self-insurance fund. Uh and I know that there is a, you know, a plan that has been in place with the help of an outside agency in order to kind of come up with, let's figure out what kind of premiums we can charge back to the county and to the employees in order to kind of help drive this number down and possibly free up resources elsewhere. So I know that, again, this has been, you know, a two to three-year um process. And I know that the it's been a very conservative process here. And as you can see, the results are, you know, kind of going in the opposite direction here um over the last couple of years. So back in two thousand and eighteen, you added over a million dollars to your your fund balance number for the year. Twenty nineteen was the same thing. In twenty twenty, you had a little bit in, you know, a better result in the whole grand scheme of things, because again, the goal here is to kind of spend down your 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 net position that's available here. You want to draw those funds down. Uh that's the overall goal. Um still trying to work on a balancing thing. And I would expect, I guess, the goal would be that you would you, in this case, you actually want and are striving for a negative change in net position. You want to experience a few years of losses here in order to to free up these uh these funds that are would be available then in other funds. So hopefully, that kind of makes a little bit of sense, uh a little bit backward thinking when it comes to to budgeting in this case. Um my la- uh last comments here will be for your long-term obligations. Uh these are all of the obligations that are uh outstanding as of the end of the year. So again, you've got basically one line item here of all of your debt obligations at the end of twenty twenty one. Uh it amounts to just over seven point four million dollars. You do have a few other liabilities that are on the books, but these are not basically non-cash items. They're not necessarily, you're writing a check for them every year. You incur some expenses as they come up, uh and that's your your other post-employment benefits or retirement benefits. You pay these out as, you know, as needed as or as those expenditures come up. So they're not really necessarily, oh, you're going to have to write uh or meet a principal and interest payment on these. Uh you're going to, you're going to need to, or you're you're going to be incurring these costs. They're actuarially de- determined costs. Uh but that's going to be over a number of years. And as as retirees uh continue to retire or um other events occur in the future in in much uh later periods, then a uh highly regimented and known uh repayment schedule um of one year, seven point four million dollars is going to be required to be paid. Uh all that boils down to is, in the state of Wisconsin, you are um obligated or you're restricted. There's a Wisconsin statute that restricts the total amount of debt any one municipality uh can have outstanding at, you know, during a given year. Uh for for the county, it it basically boils down to it's about five percent of the total equalized value of the county. Uh and a county will basically, you know, never even come close to being able to get to a hundred percent of this of of this legal debt limit. So you never really have to worry about how much debt you're um going to have here. You're never going to see this number being even 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 close to sixty to seventy percent. Um just because the the total amount of equalized value that's out there is 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 quite great, right? Um but when you're looking at a community or at a county and saying, you know, what would I consider anybody that's highly leveraged? Um, you know, twenty to thirty percent is not standing for some of major construction projects or major borrowing project that's that's out there. Um so you can see that you're at two point five million dollars as of the end of the year. Uh and I did factor in the um eight point two million dollar issuance that took place during the start of twenty twenty two. And if you factor that number in, you would be at about five point three percent of this debt limit had that debt officially hit the books in December versus January. So you even factor in the eight point two million dollar issuance, you're still very um low-leveraged at this point. You've got a lot of cash flow options out there. So you're sitting in a very uh favorable position if you would ever need to um take on additional debt in the future. Um so this is obviously going to then allow you to um have some borrowing capacity there, or if you needed to fund things just through your your cash reserves, which I mentioned earlier in the general fund, those are available to you as well. So you've got a lot of financing options if the need should arrive. Um so in a budgetary um process, overall, uh the comment is uh Pope County is doing extremely well, um financially healthy for sure. Uh and I know that there's obviously the budgeting process over the years has been very strong in Pope County. So um based on that, any questions in any of the figures that I just described? Um otherwise, I I'm going to pull up a couple uh graphs here for you. I'm not going to make any comments necessarily on this one. Uh just some people are more visual learners and uh can see things better in a table format um with some nice pretty colors there. Uh try to have to try to uh, you know, meet meet the presentation uh previous to mine a little bit, so I can show a little bit of color. All right, no, I'm not hearing any uh any questions or anything at this point. Um the real number that is going to definitely jump off the page for you here on this first uh revenue graph um is your intergovernmental line. Again, this is where all the 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 COVID funding and your your ARPA funds are flowing through this line here. And you can definitely see that over the years, this number has continued to increase. Um and it's a very large jump in twenty twenty one. Um the first tranche of the ARPA funds hits hit in twenty twenty one, and you're going to have that second tranche or second half payment uh for the four point two million dollars is also going to hit in twenty twenty two. So other than that, I appreciate your time. Uh again, if there's any questions at this point, I can, I'd be happy to try to respond to them now. Um otherwise, if something comes up in the future, you can direct those comments through administration. They they can get ahold of me as well, and I can uh address those at that time.
I've got a couple of questions.
Sure.
Do all these figures, uh excuse me, do they contain non-pharma uh labor and employment figures?
I guess I don't I don't understand your question, sir.
All these figures there are labor force in in the county, twenty four thousand and employment twenty four thousand. Are those non-farm figures?
Are you looking at, yeah, I think you might be looking at.
That's not this presentation.
Well, I would take it as a figure.
No, this is, that one is from Dan's.
Yeah, you're, that'll be next. How many years have your firm been uh uh working with Pope County?
Um the the firm is or the firm that I, the Clifton Larson Allen, has been the au- the the lead auditor here for the county um for basically my entire career, which is going on fifteen years. Uh and but it that that's my experience with Pope County. Um the predecessor firm had been been with uh Pope County for a number of years before that. I I honestly, I don't know the exact number. Um quite a few years is the answer.
Anybody else?
Yeah, for question, and maybe this is for you, Vince. This is a budgeting question. It's not an audit question. So when help human community services turns back at one point, whatever it was by, do we reset then the next year with that money? Or do we come in as as a love, is it sort of in the use it or lose it camp? So then the next year you come in um having the budget last, or you just come back up to where you.
Historically, historically, we will come back and and build off that last year's budget. So if we go up one percent in next year's budget, we'll start with that amount and go up there. Now, what we're starting to do now is look at previous years and say which accounts have not been using all their funds over so many years. But in the case of HHS, it was just, uh, I think my first year here, or no, it was the year before I got here, uh, they were down, you know, they were in the red significantly. And so anyway, I took money from the general fund. But no, we we don't normally punish them, so to speak, if that's the right word, because they came in under budget. Uh it just depends on the circumstances.
Isn't uh highway the only non-lapsing in the county? Um because of the projects you have, but carryall, everybody else has their own fund balance in highway.
Yeah. There are a few other non-lapsing accounts that have been created, like the parks, uh the, excuse me, the trail fund. And so from time to time.
There was some Kenny Grant stuff. But most of them are really zeroed out in winter general fund.
So I'll add a little commentary there too. Um for the the question earlier about the the real, I think the one of the primary reasons for the 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 zeroing out of children and families and human services or health services, um my experience, even going back to previous to to Vince and previous to its uh former uh county administrators, is there was always a challenge at budget time uh to figure out exactly what main programming, again, was either performing really well, or maybe those services were just extremely needed within Pope County. So identifying the programs that maybe needed even more resources, um some of those, you know, kind of the the drains from one year to the next, where they were continuing to to experience a lot of deficits. Uh during budget time, it was there was really analyzing the programming and figuring out, okay, which programs need more help, which ones are still performing very well. Maybe there was a new pot of um state or federal funding that Biz made available. So then you could free up local dollars from those programs into another program that maybe needed a little bit more help. And then the whole zeroing out of things was just to kind of keep tabs on the programs in total, so that you weren't going to necessarily have a runaway train with one program was severely in a deficit from one year to the next. And it was a budgeting function then to say, okay, we're going to make this clean. We're going to zero this out, figure out what our needs are, and then supplement or backfill that with additional revenue from the general fund if needed. Uh because there is obviously local property tax within these activities. Um so it's just at what level is necessary from one year to the next. Um and as as Vince, as you had mentioned earlier, I'm not aware of any, you know, punishment or any use it or lose it experience. It's always been on a program basis, uh which of these programs is in is in need of more help, or maybe some additional funding was made uh made available, or some of that, those those programs, maybe the offerings to the public uh changed. So maybe those resources aren't needed in that specific area and they're transitioned over. Um and then in terms of other non-lapsing funds, that's kind of what we're looking at over here. Uh these are some of the activities that have um specific carryover for specific purposes. Snowmobile and ATV trails, obviously, uh things like that. Um and then again, the uh capital projects funds that I was mentioning here for those items, these are non-lapsing funds as well. Um and th- they will ca- they will only lapse upon their completion.
I'd like to see the audit firm give some general advice to the county and to a supervisor.
Um there there's plenty of advice that I can give if there's something specific that you're looking for as far as um overall, when it comes to budgeting. Um like I said, the the budgeting process out of Pope County, wh- from my experience, has been very strong. So from that standpoint, continue to do what you're doing when it comes to the budget. Um you're doing extremely well as far as setting your budgetary numbers as to what they, wh- what you expect them to be or kind of what they should be, um looking at past performance and then obviously future expectations, and adhering to those budget lines. Um, you know, if you're if you set out and you're only going to spend X amount for a specific program, do your best to control your budget. And if it doesn't meet your budget expectations, do, you know, kind of the postmortem, so to speak, of why the uh activity i- isn't or wasn't what you were expecting, and then respond to it accordingly. Um the one thing that I definitely, again, will stress uh when it comes to the self-insurance fund is you do have, again, a very unique situation here where your health insurance fund is extremely healthy. I think you have the opportunity to continue to work with your outside consultants. And this is the number that actually you can that you're working on, because right now Pope County in total has about eight point one million dollars in reserves. These is, these are real funds of the county um that this is tied up and can only be used for health insurance purposes at this point. Um so if you do have the opportunity to lower premiums that are being charged, uh again, these are premiums that the general fund is getting charged. These are premiums that highway is getting charged. So if you can reduce the amount of premiums that these other departments have to pay into this fund, that'll free up those resources in order to be used elsewhere. So you do have some opportunity. Again, it's not a huge, you know, when you take eight million dollars, yes, it is a large number, but you spread it across the whole county in total. And obviously, you want to still maintain some reserves in this fund. So it's not like you're going to be spending this down to zero and go negative. You don't want to do that either. Uh but continue to monitor the performance of this fund. Um and, you know, it's it sounds kind of goofy and backwards to hear it from an auditor, but I would expect the performance of the health insurance fund in future years for one to two years to be in the negative. I would expect this to have your premiums be much less than the um claims that would be needed to be paid out.
Anyone else? Okay.
Fantastic. Well, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you via Zoom. I always uh appreciate the opportunity to not have to uh travel as much. So thank you very much. I always appreciate the opportunity to not have to travel as much. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Administrator, let us know about the condition of our county. Another presentation, this is better than Netflix.
What's Netflix? I will, I will try to be brief. I will be brief. Annual report, the purpose of this really to give you a general overview of how we in the county feel. The county is performing and how, what issues are there, what opportunities are there, what's happening in the economy and so on. Much of this is something that, it's the type of thing that we discuss in our staff meetings. We read about every morning and we try to make this a safe area in the county. I will, I've broken it up into really three sections. First, the economic demographics of the county. Second, financial, which I will cover very briefly due to our last presentation. We've got a pretty good idea there. And then finally we'll look at management and operations to give you just an overview of what's happening. First, next slide is just a comment on population. Polk County population's growth during the last census was approximately 1%. Not huge, not terrible, but it is right in the middle of the pack for the counties in the state. Right smack dab in the middle. If you look at the 10 most populous municipalities in the county, you will notice that most of the growth occurring in our county is along the river. Eric can confirm this and I noticed it too in the EDC. Part of that may be due to the fact that many of our newer residents are coming from Minnesota. They're bringing business, they're bringing their families and it may be why that, those areas are growing to some extent. When we look beyond 2021, our feeling is that we will continue to see growth. I don't think you're going to see extremely rapid growth, but I do think you'll see some marginal growth as we move forward. And again, this was really through the 2020 year and that does not include what we all saw anecdotally of the number of people who are working remotely, maybe coming up to their cabins and deciding to live here. So we think in 2021, 2022, that we've actually seen a little bit faster growth in that regard. The next slide, this looks at the population change, the components of it. In the orange is representing net migration. And you see that's positive for Polk County over here. That positive growth means that there are more people moving to Polk County than are leaving Polk County. The blue indicates though natural increase or in Polk County's case, decrease. But that probably represents is that, well, what it says is that there are more, or there are more deaths than births. Did I say that right? In other words, the population is aging. And the average age, median age in Polk County is 46.3. That's 20th out of the 72 counties. Not unusual for northern counties, rural counties in Wisconsin, especially when you have a lot of lakes because they surmise that a lot of people are retiring to their lake home. So that may be why the population is doing that. The next slide is the unemployment rate. As you all know, unemployment is very low now. We're at 3.2% with the latest numbers I have, which was as of May 31st of this year. Look at that big spike. That was the effect of COVID. That was April of 2020, when we were just getting into it. We didn't know what was happening, business shutdown, people were getting laid off, we're getting down there. Now, what's interesting is, well, when that happens, that explains why there's such competition for people. And you'll hear a constant theme and you've heard from me now for a few months. One of our key opportunities and challenges is retaining people. We have good people, they work here, they do a great job and they can get poached, right? So we want to retain people. And, and there are more ways to do that than just simply pay raises, right? And, and I've done a lot of reading where it really involves the quality of life and it involves how they feel valued. It's looking at total benefit package and compensation. Are they treated fairly and are they compensated fairly? We do have to keep an eye on that though too, because if you look at the economy right now with the inflation and that, that possible downturn in the economy, maybe even a recession. Historically, when we have a recession, the demand for goods go down, demands for goods go down, factories start laying off. And unemployment goes up. That doesn't normally hit a county as quickly because when the demand for products goes down and people get laid off, what happens? The demand for our services go up. But when a recession hits also and people's incomes go down, sales go down, sales taxes go down and a lot of people, some people may not be able to pay their property tax. But those are the types of things Jonathan was mentioning to say, when you have a general fund that's healthy, that's a good thing. Keep in mind a disaster or a recession or things like that could cause us to dig into that, you know, at any given moment. So in summary, next slide, or I'm sorry, this is a slide here looking, I'm sorry, you can go there. Economic growth and opportunity in Polk County. I, I coached this from Terry at the EDC who presented it to general government the other day. We're fortunate, we're seeing some businesses interested in moving here. Some of those new businesses are mentioned there at the top. And, you know, we're talking 30 to 60 employees for some of these companies. And, you know, that's good for our county. Business expansion, you can see in the middle there, places are expanding. Their businesses is good or, and, and, you know, they're working through their challenges, but they see the need to expand. And then we have new opportunities as well. Terry doesn't give out his secrets, but there are healthcare expansions that may be happening soon. Warehousing, housing developments in Park County. So there is a lot of economic activity here in Polk County. Okay. So in summary of this section, despite the pandemic, what we saw was tourism and service industry showed strong growth. Commercial growth has been good, but it's slowed recently. Unemployment is very low and, you know, just as a reminder, it was 16.7% when the pandemic hit. When a lot of people got, got laid off or left work. Improved retail sales, renearated record sales tax. Jonathan mentioned, I think it's 4.6 million. And it has been climbing year after year after year. Chad, I know you used to always speak to you that we can't always guarantee we expect it to slow down. This year we are actually slightly below the pace from last year. So depending on what could happen, we might come in below that 4.6 million this year. Home prices, as you know, are growing dramatically. That helps equalize value, I guess, in one sense for the counting. But we do believe that a plateau is being hit right now. We think things are starting to slow down and stabilize a little bit. Population is growing and aging. I highlighted here, finding good workers is becoming a challenge. It's, it's the phrase that I hear a lot and I'm reading a lot about now. It's called the great resignation. You know, whatever you think, a lot of times, baby boomers are just retired. They're dropping out of the workforce. And certainly there are some young people who have decided to go their own way as well and, and do other things. But for the most part, baby boomers are retiring and there aren't enough workers to fill all the jobs. It's a fact. Economists say, don't expect people to start lining up at your door. So it makes it very important, if we're going to continue to have quality people and able to do good things and you'll see some of the things we're doing later, we have to get good people and we have to keep them development and give them a, a succession plan where they can move up through the organization as opposed to saying, well, to get a promotion, I have to move. Inflation, 9.1% was the last I saw. That affects the county in many ways. You know, Mo is always telling me, you know, yeah, we gotta buy these plows. They've gone up so much this month and any construction, we know the prices are going up. We have to watch that. We have to consider the possibility for a recession. So part of the purpose of going over this section with you now is it kind of sets the table as we head into the budget season. So when I, you know, keep in mind these things as we start developing our budget, presenting it to you, you'll be seeing things that are targeted to help us during a recession or a downturn, but also to help us to recruit and retain people. Okay. Now the financial overview, just real quickly, I, I want to emphasize, we do have a great general, you know, fund balance. We do, in the last three years, we have, the levy has stayed below the maximum allowed. You know, that's between 300 and $400,000 each year. You know, it's our goal to kind of keep that down as low as possible, you know, and so that we can keep that the burden on, on the citizens down. The general fund balance, my numbers are a little different. I didn't have the exact numbers when I put this, when I got this slide. But if you take out some of the things like the ARPA fund that we got at the end of the year and refinancing that loan, we calculated about 21 million in the general fund balance. If you notice from 20 to 21 in the orange line, by policy, we changed our policy. It used to be we had to maintain 25% of the general fund that we could not touch from the unassigned general fund. Now we've moved that up to 50%. So we do have cash there to work with. The opportunities that, the other thing Jonathan said is we are very low in terms of our capacity. So I'm not saying we want to borrow more money, but in the case that we had to, we certainly have a lot of room to maneuver. Next, I, I don't know, and I just put this up here, not that you can read all these things. That's the way I like it if you can't read it, right? But which of those colors is expanding the most at the end? It's the orange, right? Yeah, that's really driving the increase in revenue. And what that orange represents is intergovernmental funding, state, federal grants, ARPA fund. So our revenues are growing, which is great. Do we really think those grants and funds and ARPA is going to continue? Right? So with that in mind, as we go into this budget year, we are going to exert caution. The other thing I will say is, it's, it's like in my home. You know, you, you get a little windfall, you get that bonus check back when I was working in the drug business. Or suit. That doesn't sound right. And what do you do? You tend to spend and then you see, maybe I could do this, maybe we could go on that trip. I know, and let's go see my brother in Chicago too. It happens in this county as well. We, we, even though we're all disciplined, we're all trying to do what's right, there's something about asking for more money because we got it. Look at all the outside agencies that presented the general government. Every one of them so far had asked for more money last year. So as, as someone told me, you know, sometimes you have to be the, what's it called, the pope of note. But we do have to maintain some discipline in, in some of these requests that we're getting. The next page is expenses. And again, there you can see some expenses going up in 2021 and Brown's. And that is principal associated with the loan. But other than that, expenses are staying relatively stable. The public safety has gone up a little bit, but we've had some great investments in communications and, and coverage. The body scanner and those types of things. Okay. Next, I get into the management and operations and, and let me just say, it's been one, two and a half years ago, a little over two years ago, the board decided we're going to focus on longer term goal priority. Rather than just jump year to year and change things and maybe make some little tweaks here and there. We said, let's do something that might be more long-term. And these were the four goals we came up with. Reduce substance abuse, increase public safety, expand broadband, invest in parks, trails and tourism. Big goals require focus and persistence. If we can maintain our focus on these main things and some other important things, don't get me wrong, we can have a bigger impact. From the next page, I'll show you just briefly some of the things that we're moving to. With substance abuse, we really, you know, this is one that we revamped CJCC. We've gone through a couple of new coordinators. We've got a good one now, very good. We've got new committees, we're focused. We did receive a $750,000 grant awarded from the DOJ. This was a highly competitive grant because of the programming we're starting to do. That was received and, and very much needed. We averaged 24 participants per month in our diversion program. Now, somebody pointed out, what do we have about 80 people in the jail? On average, maybe lately and 24, you know, that's almost 25, 30%. You know, it would be that much higher if these folks weren't in a structured program working on diversion. They might be in jail as well. So, you know, we, we always want to get people in these programs that need it and we think it helps. The other thing too is with CJCC, we've been working on improving our analysis so that we can understand what's happening. Once we have a better understanding of what's happening, what's working, what's not, we think that we can actually start targeting actions that will help us more there. So CJCC is making progress. Increase public safety. I mean, this is something that the county is committed to. Upgrades in law enforcement, communication, equipment, better coverage in key areas that we needed. We talked about the body scanner, the additional drug investigation officer. That was, I think, right before I got here. But, and then also the recreational officer. We did hire an analytics expert to support crime analyses and investigations. But what I'll say is, we just have that person on board now and she, and she's very, seems like she's very talented and she's going to work throughout the county, not just in criminal investigations and criminal activities, but also in environmental services, statistical analyses and general government. This person is going to add value throughout the county. And, and a theme I hope you see or I'll remind you is that a lot of these ideas that have come up or, or you're going to see coming up are the result of the people in this room and the people in the county staff. When we went to the divisional form of government, I think what it did was it gave us some very good people focused in certain areas. They could use their creativity. We unleashed that and said, go get it, find the issue, find the solution. It also enables us to do more than one thing at a time. And we actually are tackling many of these types of things because we have that divisional structure with good leadership. So I think that's a kudo to our, our staff. The other thing I'll mention is community services division meeting with COVID challenges. When I saw that April 2020 number, I remember what that was like. I remember when COVID hit and how we didn't know what was going to happen. And because we had some creative people and people who buckled down and strapped their helmets on, so to speak, we really came up with some good measures in the county. You know, think about Mo and Tanya working together to create the vaccine through the highway bill. Thinking outside the box, those are the types of things that when you have a good group of people working together, taking ownership of their divisions, you start generating good ideas. So that's like a testament. Next slide is broadband. Really good stuff here. And, and I think we should all feel very proud about what's happened. We got work to do, but really we created a first of a kind broadband access map. You remember our consultant that came in and he figured out, rather than just looking at census block, let's get it down to more of a street level. We then identified where those most important gaps are, or the biggest gaps. We brought in the local internet service providers, talked to them about it. They talked to us about what we've been doing or not doing. And we came up with a plan to help them win award. The result being local ISPs were awarded grants to cover 26 businesses and 906 residents in our target areas. The result being local ISPs were awarded grants to cover twenty-six businesses and nine hundred and six residents in our target areas. One out in the St. John area, in Tracy's area, and then a big one down in Osceola and Farmington. And already, one of the internet service providers is contacting me saying, now I want to figure out how I can fill the gaps in between. Because we can't get to every street yet, right? But we're making rapid advancements in broadband, which is going to help businesses, schools, individuals, younger people who want to move here. Those things are important. Next. Invest in parks, trails and tourism. This one is really exciting. We are, we completed a comprehensive trail study completed by our PTAG group. Again, the Division Director and Community Services, I'm sorry. Environmental Services Bob came up with the idea of rather than us fighting it out in this room, let's get experts, stakeholders from outside areas, bring them in together. Instead of them throwing darts, have them participate in the process. And it really did work well. We have thirteen new trail, trail projects underway. Parks are being enhanced. The Highway Department has picked up the implementation aspect of the parks and trails. We're also doing aquatic invasive species stations throughout the county. All of the county landings are covered with signage and people, or people, but, and also many of the other ones are starting to do this as well. We also undertake water quality studies to ensure that Polk County continues to be known as a great place to, to visit and a great place to live. Okay, next, I'm almost done. Opportunities and challenges. Spending discipline and targeted priority. That's what I'm going to harp on. We have to stay tough, disciplined. The urge is to keep asking for more money. And it comes up to my office every day and more and more, we have to say, no, let's focus on what's most important to you and what can wait. The grants and the strong economy are not going to be here forever. We're going to see that turn around. Inflation is having a major effect on our services and capital. The other thing we've done of late is, is we're really focused on a forward thinking or branding of the county. We have our website, which is coming out any month now. It'll be out this year. I've seen the prototype. We're just inserting the information now. It's going to be very user friendly. It's going to draw more people to look at the website. It's going to draw them to our resources, to our activities, to our businesses. We have hired a public information associate who is working, you know, not only on the website, but also internal brand. How do we make sure people understand that they're working at Polk County? There are a lot of good benefits to being here. We want to brand what it means to work here. And then university branding project, we're working with University of Wisconsin over the next three to four years. Putting that project in place to identify who we want to be, what direction do we go and how do we get there? Retention and recruitment is going to be key. Security, both physical and information technology is a constant. Scott Good's done a terrific job. If you work in the county like we do, you, you test him every once in a while because he's always sending you little quizzes to take, how do you catch fame? You know, spam and all this stuff. And yeah, you gotta take these little tests, but it helps. In addition, he's really working on our software and making sure that we are protected. And that's going to continue every day forever. Jonathan mentioned the health fund. Healthy. Yes, we're trying to draw it down. The bad news is we're not. But the good news is, is it says that our health expenditures are lower than we think. We are working hard and how do we keep our folks healthy? How do we motivate them to do preventive care? Those types of things that is working. We will continue to take money, more money out of that to reduce rates that our employees pay. And it's also used to help pay many of the expenses in the county. So my point is, if we, we get it down to the amount it's supposed to be in seven years. This year we're taking like seven hundred and fifty-four thousand or seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to help fund things in the county. In seven years, seven forty, there it is there. In seven years, we may not have that. That's a hole, but we have to fill somewhere to keep our level of service and products at the same. So overall, last slide. Financial position of the county is good. The divisional form of government is improving productivity. And it's creating ideas that we're turning into action because people have the freedom and the authority to go out. Human resource management is, is a correct priority due to the great resignation concept. Security will always be a priority. And I'm giving my caution now. Inflation, the slowing economy, fewer grants will require more than ever this year in budgeting. So questions?
I just attended a five day committee and Wisconsin Counties Association, Jonathan, the full-time financial advisor. And he really stressed just what you just said there. We, he had all kinds of figures that we are in a recession. The state and federal money coming to our county is going to be way less. And our sales tax is already showing a decline. And he, he was, he was very stressful.
Yeah, you know, you, you can read, you read ten articles in the morning, you read ten different, different theories. But, you know, I think the general consensus that we're starting to see the evidence.
He had all the figures.
Yeah.
Less of a question, more like an observation, supporting what you're talking about with retention of employees. So specifically at schools. And I know this is common among a lot of different schools, like Unity specifically, young teachers. It's incredibly hard for them to keep young teachers right now because they come to a school like Unity, either fresh out of college or close. And they get their experience in order to take the first offer that comes from another district. So that's just something that I know Unity is struggling with. You know, they're going to have a whole new crop of kindergarten teachers. And, you know, for the people that have been in Polk County for a long time, we've known these kindergarten teachers at Unity for decades. So this is a whole different universe now. And what the thing is now, it's turned into a revolving door. So it's that same situation is replicated across a lot of different industries, not just education.
We've changed how we handle folks, the work of the county. We encourage them to look for opportunities within the county to expand it. You know, that's what it used to be. You took a job, say, what do you want to do with your life? You know, what do you want to do next? And I said, well, as soon as my boss dies or moves away, I want his or her job. We can't do that anymore. People want satisfaction. They want success development. We got to get them moving around and use those skills.
Exactly. Your point earlier, when you said it's not just a matter of higher salary, better benefits, things like that. Especially for young people now, they want, you know, quality of life and to be in a place where they're going to feel comfortable putting down roots and things like that. So the broader picture of not just, you know, am I being compensated fairly? Do I have the benefits I need to take care of my day to day? But am I also in a place where I can see myself living here for five, ten, twenty, however many years? So I like the, I like the broader focus instead of retaining.
Yeah. And I'm not, I'm not going to pitch in here from the last presentation, but I think it was about ten years ago, we did the comprehensive plan, Bob. And part of that, what a goal was to have some type of sports recreation facility to entice, you know, to want to get our young people involved, to get younger families to say, hey, this would be a great place for my family. Get the parents engaged and that type of thing. So yeah, it's, it's all of the above. The things we do could reflect what the county.
Unity is not alone there. I understand. Osceola's got twenty-six new openings. And they had a special board meeting upon increasing benefits, salaries and taxing. We all lose a lot to Minnesota in this area.
Well, and you look at the same thing, not just in education, but in law enforcement. County, I believe, I'm guessing is still two full-time positions down. Milltown is two part-time positions down, like they can't, where you used to have a hundred plus heads, you know, per opening. Now you've got nothing. So I mean, and again, it's a matter of not just bodies, but also just people willing to make the move to that area.
At our convention, I believe it was the sheriff of receiving county said, short, twenty-six deputies. Doesn't know what to do, all over time, stressed out.
Okay.
More questions? So this health insurance thing must have a direct affect them on labor we charge others. If you reduce it, what does that do to, when you start playing with those numbers? What we charge to other services, townships and health department, those services, what, what does that do to that? Amount that we charge and how we make up.
You know, Chad's not here to explain it, but I would, what we did was we said, this is money that's paid into our health system to cover us in the event we have a pandemic, medical expenses go way up. So we have created this fund over the decade to use if we go over what we budget for healthcare. It's built so high now. We said, we got to draw that down to a reasonable level. The auditors say, get that down. So the small amount of premiums, you know, the twenty percent of, of healthcare premiums that this county pays, twenty percent of it is probably paid by employees, and I may have the numbers slightly wrong. That's why we're improving the benefit, better dental care, we're reducing their premium. We're, we're giving back a portion to the employee. And then we're, we're taking that rest to say, now let's, maybe we help fund our, our pay increase, our salary increase. That's how that money is being used. So that when we do our budget, you know, we're not counting on revenue, so to speak, from somebody to, to pay for that. We're actually saying, here's, here's revenue generated internally, but we need to draw it down.
Because that health fund is just, that's just self-funding health insurance for employees, right?
Yes. And it's drawing interest too, right?
Yeah.
The point was, maybe. Number, you know, it's not eight million. Yeah. So is there, I mean, or is that something actuaries have to figure out?
I think our audit folks would say normally we, we would recommend that being, they say like, I think it was eight fifty to one point two, one point three million. And I think we're shooting for that one point three million.
Couple of hard tags.
We're, we're, we're a little concerning because we don't want to get.
But we're also capped, remember, each employee. So if there is something catastrophic, right, like, you know, many, many several, several illnesses with multiple employees. I mean, we are, we are capped at what we're paying per person because we've got catastrophic outside coverage on hospital.
Okay, anything else? Number twelve is there's nothing to work on there. We have a confirmation of a, of an appointment by the county administrator.
Yes, it's a reappointment. For the Health and Human Services Board, Dr. Arnie Lager. His year term is up and would like to do it. And we are extremely happy to have him participating again. Medical physician has a wealth of history here in the county. So we do need a vote.
Okay. We'll, we need to confirm that appointment by.
I move for approval, second.
Motion made in second to approve the appointment of Dr. Lager. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Negatively, the same, nothing. It's, mark it down as the absolute unanimous.
I'll be done for two votes.
Okay. I think we, we had the people here in reference to, to public comment, I don't know if they.
Oh, I can quickly comment. I apologize. We had a typo on our, our agenda that did say the West Conference Room. So they did go to the wrong location. I did let them know that they couldn't, you were going to accept late public comment, but they opted to leave. They have handles for the supervisors, which I can add on to the packet as their comment.
Okay.
And we can go from there. So that was my fault. I'm sorry. And, but I did let them know.
Yeah, I wondered, I, I should have called you on that. I, I wondered about that because we all, of course, know what's going on. But I did not realize not everybody does. I don't know why. They don't care about our business as much as I think they do. Especially by the phone calls. The county board chair report, I really don't have anything to report. Everything's going as, as expected. Going quite smoothly, actually. So I've been trying to attend as many different committee meetings as I can to get a better idea of of what, what the county board functioned like the last twenty years. I didn't really pay much attention. Anyway, I'm trying to catch up. Well, that'd be, the administrator, he's probably got more to say than I do.
Okay.
And this is.
I got some good news. I'm very happy to report that the Department of Administration has offered and he has accepted the General Government Division Director job, Mr. Don Wertham, who's back sitting next to Malia. Don is the, I think most, many of you know him from some of his many projects he's helped the county with. CJCC, setting the goals for the board, helping with that. He's also, he's actually still currently employed, but on loan from University of Wisconsin Extension, where he's focused on strategic planning, capacity building and program development and human development relationships. He will lead the division, which consists of human resources, information technology and finance. The other thing I'll say is he has executive experience. He was the president of a university in Florida. When he has tremendous leadership, we're very happy to have him. And we are making, we have actually extended an offer for an H, for a finance man. And very pleased to get that and I'll announce that next month when she officially reports. We mentioned a little bit about the cash we have on campus. And one of the things Chad had worked with Amanda Nissen, our treasurer, with, we, we sat down and said, where, where is our cash? How much interest are we drawing on it? And just not too long ago, you weren't getting any interest. You could just keep it in a checking account and get more interest than you could in other areas. We did shift a lot of our cash in a certain amount. We still have some in checking accounts and so on, plenty. But we anticipate approximately eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars over the next two years in interest income. And that includes the ARPA funds that we have and we find these so that they're in treasuries or CDs until they're going to be needed. It includes the money we have borrowed from Brimmer Bank for the building construction at two point one percent. And now some of that money is making anywhere from two point six to three percent interest. So that money's going to work. That will help offset some of the things that, you know, will hit us next year. So that's good news. Want to recognize, you may not know we're going to do this, but I want to recognize the clerk's office. Not often you get a letter from the U.S. State Department and they talk and, oh, what's going on? This was actually an audit of passport processes and our clerk's office scored a perfect score. And the letter said that was, that's very rare. And they, they wanted to congratulate them. Security services. And you see them taking the pictures and you say, one can be involved. That's important in terms of safety and security. You know, you have citizens coming in, they're going to be traveling abroad or they're going to be traveling here, whatever. You need to, you need to know your stuff. This didn't involve just the process, but it also involved things like customer service. So I think that's a very, very good accomplishment. I'm going to turn it over to Mo to give a building update.
Good evening. Quick update on the Government Center project. It's, it's moving along, like running it off.
It's, it's moving along like running on a pro course. Every, every time you turn around, there's another obstacle, and someone's shooting water cannons at you. Moving really, trying to close up phase one, the main floor and the ground level floor. Our moving dates were supposed to be for office switching to go to a second phase was the twenty-fifth of this month. We pushed that to the second, especially for the ground floor, moving those people down there. We found out today though, the windows for the ground floor are to be delivered August second, hopefully installed by August eighth. So we're still working, it's very fluid as we go through this. Along with that, our radiator valves that were on backwater, we have five of them that subsequently did not come in. We're waiting on those. And we pushed back the move of the clerk's office and the deeds office back. They solely go in those areas depending on the size with that. So everything's fluid, and we make these office moves. That was going to move the upper parking lot to the lower parking lot and bring customers back into our main entrance. So the timing on this is getting very critical and trying to move everyone at the same time to start phase two. Lead times right now are constantly changing with materials in this scenario. Our lighting control panel has moved from January twenty-third, or January twenty-twenty-three to September, to September, which is good. Our generator date has moved up to December first. Our transfer switches are still in March twenty-third, trying to get those moved up. Our main electrical gears move now to February twenty-third. The water heaters are expected in four to five weeks. Our chillers are still mid-March of twenty-three. The cooling doors are the middle of August, and those are for the customer service windows. There are fire doors, security doors, so that if something goes off, they'll come down automatically. And that goes behind those. The wind doors for phase one are still eight weeks out. We did get approval to have temporary doors put in so that we can move those apartments sooner with that. So there's going to be a little bit of rework as we go back, back and forth through departments and the phasing, trying to get that in there. The toilet partitions have arrived on site, piles being installed. Some of the acoustic ceiling are in phase one, are all temporary right now. When the, the original ones on backwater come in, they'll be switched out quickly. Lighting grids are going back in. But now we're still fighting, customers still drive up to the main entrance and walk in there. No matter what the signage is and the cones and the barricades and blocking that off. Though Mark and Johnson and the subs in there and the electrical people are very accommodating to them to get them to the right apartments. But we are, are still fighting that. Right now, we are going through approximately, I think we paid out about thirty-three percent of the main project right now at this point in class invoice of this demand. Continuity is right now at seventy-three percent. We had some credits come back in on that, still going through that, part of them. So it's an ongoing thing on supply and demand and how we can get them back in there. So it's very fluid for the departments. I apologize, as far as moving dates, I can't give you a firm date as this, we're chasing this ball across hillside trying to get it in the right spot. So kind of an update, it's moving along. It's looking good as far as the boardroom. We got the pricing in for the audiovisual stuff in there, working on the furniture. We have the layout for that laid out right now. The carpet, the carpet is installed in the boardroom, that is looking very good. We're bringing in a Trazo company to match our Trazo flooring, which is a savings for us from just having to try to just scab in a piece of other flooring and make it look like it's quilt work. That's coming along. So it is coming along very well. AC in the building has been a challenge, to say the least, as my call at quarter of six on Monday, when the heat came on, said that air units are not working, we have no power to them. So we got those up by about eight-thirty, which takes a lot of time to balance out the building. So I do appreciate everyone's patience in that building. They've been very good about waiting on the AC. It has been sticky in there for AC units, and we're, we're running them now twenty-four-seven to try to keep the building cool. With, if they fail, we'll switch to emergency situations. We have that on backup. We can have a portal unit on site in twenty-four hours to have that backup. But we're utilizing what we have now, we're just spending that money. Right now it's going.
Any questions? Other than the fact that when we went in?
Hopefully, the boardroom anticipate having August and September meetings here. And hopefully in October, we'll have a meeting for the first time. Depending on the lead time for the desk and everything.
Thank you so much.
Just one comment. I'm so glad I retired.
Okay.
One last thing I ask, Malia, to give us a legal update on a couple of matters that were all in.
Okay, so I'll just stand over here rather than wiggle my way up to front. On the Stauer litigation, as you recall, there's two cases, one involving the Friends of the Stauer and the DNR, and then the county. And then the other one, just between the Friends and the county. Right now, the one between the Friends and the county is on hold. And kind of, it's gone to the back burner while everyone argues motions to dismiss in the one that has the DNR. In fact, the county's motion to dismiss is due, I believe, next week, as is the DNR. So in that case, both the county and the DNR have filed new motions to dismiss because the Friends were allowed to change their original pleadings. In other words, change what they were claiming. So then we had to go repackage the original motion to dismiss and make some changes to address that change that was allowed. That is, that briefing schedule is set out with an anticipated oral argument date at the end of September. And then what has historically happened with these cases is that after oral argument, Judge Black sets it out for an oral ruling. And that is dependent, of course, on his calendar and when that can be fit in. Although anything could happen. I would anticipate if things keep going on as they have been, that there would be an equestrian season because I don't anticipate these cases being resolved before that. There is a potential for them being resolved before the snowmobile season in the winter. But that is uncertain as well. But that's the update on the Friends litigation with the county. And then the only update, and it's really not much of an update, with the negotiations between the county and the Fair Society. Because there was not a executive committee meeting this month, next month, the executive committee will be taking a look at the draft that was provided. Because of that date and the, and the planned vacation from Mr. O'Sullivan, who is the attorney for the Fair Society, our anticipated date for getting back together with both the committee and then the Fair Society representatives and the attorneys might have to be pushed out. But things are on, they're moving slowly, but they're, they're, they're moving. Any questions?
Yeah. When did it start with the trade? How many years have we got to head into this part?
Talking about the litigation itself, it's been about a year.
But it's only been a year.
No, it's been more than a year. Because they, if you recall, we've gone through three injunction hearings. The Friends tried to enjoin the snowmobile season. That was right when they filed the action, and then the equestrian season that was denied. And then the snowmobile, the snowmobile season this most recent winter, and that was denied. So it's, yeah, we're. But this is civil, complex civil litigation with multiple parties. And then the court's calendar is not friendly, and it's not the court's fault. So it's, it's not necessarily just the fact that people are still arguing, it's just the process. It's, it takes a while.
Okay, anybody else? All right. Substance abuse, anybody got any update on that?
That work?
God.
General Government Director. Soon to be. Right, so Don Wertham, I haven't met everybody, but I think I've met most of you. I'm just going to briefly present on what's been going on in terms of data for substance abuse in the county. And also, I want to sort of seed you with a couple of ideas about how we might do this differently. And then we'll be responsive to your desires in terms of what kind of data you need for setting policies as a supervisor. So Chad, if you could, we're going to really just blast through this, but there's a presentation there. And you've also got a handout with you here, says CJCC dashboard. If you could advance the next slide then. So so this is what you've been seeing each month or nearly every month. And it was a combination of effort from the sheriff and from Chad Roberts, the former General Government Director, and a number of people that work around the CJCC and the substance abuse community. This is great. What I'm going to pitch you today is we're going to, if, with your approval, go in a slightly different direction. We want to make our data a little bit more managerially actionable. We want to be able, be able to tell a little bit better stories with it. Unfortunately, you got to look at about eight more slides with data to get there, but we'll go as fast as you can. So one of the main things we'd like to do for you to consider is let's start looking at time series data. If we were to go back to that slide, it was point in time. So we can see in May, there were this many women in diversion programs and this many men. But we don't get any sort of trend. So we'd like to start giving you trend data. So this is a six-month look back, and this is from the sheriff, thank you, about substance abuse-related arrests. And we can see over time, it's pretty stable. Now, we get between a hundred and twenty, a hundred and forty arrests, and somewhere in the thirty to forty range. A problem's not going away. That's one of these things that we can read from that graph. If we're seeing point in time, we may not get that. Chad, you can go. So what are the big problems that we've got around substance abuse? Again, if we're looking at point in time, we might not see it. If I've lived in the county for eight years, and I knew that we had some issues with this, I didn't necessarily understand the scale of the difference, say, between alcohol and meth. That's a really big problem. But we can't discount alcohol, obviously. So we can get some sense of scale by looking at graphs like this and seeing how things change. You know, around the holidays, we seem to have a lot of people that are spending time in their cars, drinking and driving. Maybe it's a little less than some of the sheriff, and know more about that than I would. But we can start to interrogate these graphs, look for trends, and look for ideas about how to solve problems. Next slide. I don't think there's any surprises here. And you'll see that we sort of drift around, may not be particularly managerially actionable, gender and drug use. Maybe we don't even report this anymore. You can tell us that. Don't, don't spend your time on this particular slide or this particular data. Keep going, Chad. One of the county board's top priorities is reducing crime. A big part of that is keeping people from repeating. And the diversion programs in the CJCC, I think you heard about those programs from Melissa Fisher last month, are targeted at doing that, trying to reduce that number of folks that are repeating. You can ask us how we're doing with that every year. We should, we owe it to you to be able to tell you that. Next slide. This is a slide, I just want you to get the big picture on this for a second. You know, month in and month out, this is where we are right now. We have about twenty, twenty, twenty-four people in diversion programs. If we're seeing that point in time, it may not be very impressive. You may say, "That's not a lot of folks." But Vince pointed out a second ago, and you can go to the next slide. Our jail population is around eighty now. So we're with those diversion people. Yes, Sheriff?
You hit ninety-four this week.
Okay. That is July, so thank you, Sheriff. Next time you see this slide, we'll bump January off and bring that July number. And you might ask the sheriff or someone who's knowledgeable, "Why do you think those numbers went up?" But you can make these, these interesting comparisons, the jail population versus what's going on with diversion. Don't do the diversion programs if you don't want to keep people out of jail. That's what they're for. Okay, so what's my real pitch here? We can do this, not just for CJCC and substance abuse data. Vince mentioned we've got data analytic capability that we haven't had in the past. We've had meetings with other division directors who say, "I want to be able to look at my operations this way." So for all I know, Bob wants to look at permit, changes in building permits over time. Mo want to look, may want to look at how many tons of salt he's spreading, or how many road, you know, miles of roads he's maintaining. We have the capability to do that now. And so it would be great to get some feedback from you. Would you like to see information like this across the divisions and departments? Or do you really want to just focus on substance abuse in this meeting? We can do what you want to do. We could have a round robin, where one month you hear about substance abuse, and the next you hear about building permits. Point is, I'm trying to make is we can be flexible to your needs, so you can set best possible policy for county. The general government will try to meet the needs that you have for data.
So if, if this is, this is great stuff here. So your inputs, are they, are they all in place? So like, if I, if I were to ask, the recidive number is quite large. And I would be interested in how many are, are, you know, at a felony level, potential felony level? Like how many, many weapons charges? Because I don't ever think I see any weapons charges going down. And I can't, I just can't imagine that there's no weapons charges at all.
And the sheriff can respond to the specifics, but in terms of data, the sheriff collects data, has to get funding, if I'm not mistaken. He has UCR data, he got a report. You can, you can fill in the data, but we can get any of the data that's available. The sheriff provides this to us, you know, off his own jail census, but we can get data at the state and federal level too that they capture. I'm sorry, Sheriff, I should have let you talk.
Well, that's been done. Um, so there are some hurdles with the data, and Vince probably knows a little bit about this. But the system, the IT system isn't set up ideally for us to pull some of this data. So we have some hurdles with that. But ultimately, we have data, it's just a matter of how we extract it. And we will work very hard to get what you need. I mean, that's, you know, we have nothing to hide with this. We, you know, we showcase what we do. I can say some of the trends where alcohol is higher. I've been without canines for several months. And when we don't have the canines, the drug stuff goes down, and then the intoxicated driving goes up. So I've got a canine in full strength now. Well, I'm still one short, but I've got a canine on the road regularly now. So I expect we'll see in the next month or two, higher levels of meth and marijuana arrests.
And Sheriff, when you, so to split this up by substance, if you, if you arrest somebody for drunk driving, and during that stop you find meth, and let's say a small quantity of meth, a large quantity of marijuana, how, how does that, how does that, how do you determine how that's captured on this?
Typically, it's the most serious charge. It's oftentimes you have somebody that has meth and marijuana and was driving. So we get all of them, but we would probably score that in the meth category since that's a felony level arrest. And it is not perfect data. Where, I think the repeat offenders are even higher because all I check is if the person's been booked in here before. If they're a Minnesota arrest, I don't run a criminal history. They may have five hundred arrests over there, but here they're a first time because they're maybe visiting and they got caught. So I think the number's probably even higher.
One tool I think that is, that could be a lot more helpful is if we, we do some benchmarking. And I don't know if your analyst and, you know, the, your desire to improve on the statistical reporting here, if you looked into any kind of benchmarking on any of these topics, whether it's criminal justice or, you know, all the other things you were suggesting.
Well, we may have different, county benchmarks for different pursuits. You know, as an example, if we're looking at building permits, we might pick out counties in Minnesota. I'm making this up for Bob. We, within the criminal justice discussion, we talked about a five-county group that is similarly sized. Even within that, so, you know, Dunn isn't like both, even though we both have forty-five thousand presidents roughly. So you can do this benchmarking, and it's productive, I think we should. There's still some interpretation that we have to do. Sheriff's sort of talking about getting in a little bit deeper and bringing some additional thinking to some of these categorizations. So he was just talking about civism. He's pretty sure those numbers under report. With benchmarking, we can do it, but we've probably also got to have that criticized as well.
And I like your idea of having a round robin. And I'm not sure what the date is, but I'm just thinking our Health and Human could.
And I like your idea of having a round robin. And I'm not sure what the date is, but I'm just thinking our health and human, you could, I mean, there's, we get lots of numbers that the board might be interested. Number of kids we had to place, number of kids we had to move out of their homes, number of households or, or families that are unhoused, blah, blah, blah. I mean, and environmental services, there's tons of things we could, so it'd be fun to do that. Because we don't necessarily need to see this every single month, just.
So Amy, if we were to do that, one idea would be to essentially develop an editorial calendar uh where we, in this, we would, we could propose it to you and then you could, as a board, you can tell us whether you, you like to order or not. But we could come up with something like that where uh issues from environmental services, from public safety, uh public works, uh health and human services came up, and then you could say, that looks pretty good. And we could work with the departments and divisions to get that date on that kind of publication schedule.
I think this is a question that'll be presented to general government and they should make the decision as to how this back including human services or specify which ones, you know, some may, may not be too interesting for a month or two. Uh, whereas we can slip another one in, but probably run it into general government, have them propose a portion of the, or propose it to the agenda item. I would expect. Be a logical way to do it. Otherwise, we'd have a big conglomerate of things going coming in. Everybody knows, but what are we going to look at next week?
I agree. Like what you mentioned, Amy, I've been seeing there have been some posts on Facebook from, uh, from, um, I don't know, childcare department or whether, I don't know the name of the department, um, uh, about, about foster homes. They need foster parents and how many foster parents we need in the county. Who know, you know, I never knew some of those statistics until, I mean, I would hear some of that once a year, whatever, the health, when I was in health and human services. But this was like right now, we're having meetings because we need people. And it was good for the community to see those numbers because it's shocking, you know, that, that kind of stuff.
Anything else? Did you have more?
No, I'm done, sir.
Anybody else have anything? Well, uh, we'll be seeing you in general government. Okay. Announcement of supervisors, uh, I'm meeting with Mayor and Johnny. Um, I'll make this as quick as I can, but it really should improve, you know, tribute information here. Uh, I'm the county representative of the Wisconsin County Steering Committee. We meet three times a year, the same five categories as we have in our county sheriffs and human services and that. And what we do is we have uh proposed resolutions that go to the legislature that are, are lobbying, present, uh, ban bar. Uh, the good news is our, our first meeting was July eighth and we had two resolutions from the sheriff's department. I, I don't know if you even got the results, uh, Sheriff, but one of them was, and I presented them both, they both passed unanimous. Uh, the first one was, and you really have to read the details. I, I didn't really, don't want to go through all the detail. But uh, number one was that there was a resolution from my sheriff's department for immunity for sheriffs and, and uh personnel deputies and that. And uh, that passed unanimous. We had one guy from Winnebago County that was adamant that uh, uh, that uh, strike the word immunity for sheriffs and, and that. And uh, so we, it can be resolution amendments, and he was the only one in favor of that amendment. So then we voted on the main question, passed that unanimous. And the other one from my sheriff's department was uh, uh, petitioning the legislature to fund thirty dollars per capita for our rural fire departments and EMS people because they're just closing up from all the way from Bay, especially along the border from Bayfield. And that passed unanimous. So those will be, those go into the state convention and onto the legislature. Now, we, our officers, they do, uh, it goes from, from the officer to the uh, uh, officers of the committee. And they uh, uh, make a recommendation or non-recommendation. And uh, those both were unanimous on our, on our office for adoption. Um, and there was a couple other ones from our environmental department. And uh, today was the last meeting at the, these meetings, I had three of them at uh, Stevens Point and two of them at uh, Wisconsin Health. Today, the important one that I got passed was uh, from our uh, environmental committee and is urging the state of Wisconsin to adequately fund state agencies regarding cave hole regulations for, to protect groundwater and air quality. And uh, we got that passed unanimously. Amy, there was uh, there was one uh, addition to that that was passed that really strengthened that position. And then there was three other ones that I introduced that passed. So uh, boy, in my twenty years, this is the first time that our staff has worked, came up with the resolutions that are proposed. Fantastic uh, uh, participation from Hope County staff. It's got to be very, um, one other thing. Maybe, you know, Mark Nelson, uh, his wife retired as a teacher from Rock Cola. And he's the mayor of our highway department and asked for prayers for his family.
Yeah, um, Mark's one of my heavy equipment operators. He is uh scheduled to retire in November. Uh, in the April, May, he had some pain in his stomach and, and was suffering weight loss. If that was from his uh, uh, new diabetes medication. Um, so in May, he was doctorated for that. Um, turns out it was uh stage four pancreatic cancer. Um, he passed away thirty minutes ago. So if your prayers are with his family, so, so we'll be doing something in the highway shop for him.
Anybody that knew Mark, it just is a terrific impression. Hard to replace as a worker. I mean, all you do is keep. Anybody else have anything?
Yeah, I got, I got a couple.
I attended to the Round Lake rehab district, Bone Lake and the district. In the last week, for that, one of the most last, and the Round Lake is dealing with alum treatment. Trying to figure out if there's any way they can pay for them because they're very expensive. And Bone Lake, most of it was monetarily discussing the budget for the annual meeting.
Jay, I have one thing.
Go ahead.
Hope County Fairs next week. Everybody knows I have fair passes for everyone, all of the board supervisors. Um, there also in here is a letter letting you know that there is a fair board tour on Friday night at seven o'clock. Um, you're to meet at the admin building and they will take you around on the people mover, show you all the accomplishments with the funding from Hope County, um, the funding that the Fair Society has put in in the last two years. Last year, we did not have one um, just because of the circumstances going on. So it's kind of a makeup year. So everybody that wants passes, um, I will hand them out to you and you can attend the fair on Friday night and join the tour. I did give Lisa the information as well, um, Leah, so that she can post the notice, um, the meeting. So you guys grab these before you leave. That'd be great.
Yeah, I just encourage everybody to go out and take that tour. You know, there was uh some harsh things said about the conditions of the Hope County Fair grounds. I think if you get out in there and take a look now. I spent Monday myself working on my skid steer there. I was just, everywhere I look, I see improvement. So I think, you know, we should take a few minutes. If you can, stop in there. Is this my check? And then uh, after the public safety meeting last month, a few of us toured the nine-one-one center. And Hill Staff will make it clear that any public supervisor, open supervisor wants to tour that and set it up and do it. She'll, you know, bring in and show it to you. Couple of things, I had never seen it. I've been through the jail tour, but I'd never seen it. These people got to live in a room about half this size, twelve hours a day. They got to take their lunch there. They had to go to the bathroom there. They cannot leave that room. And then Joe indicated to me that the amount of requests for information that are coming in now. Everybody wants a copy of the nine-one-one calls. Who called? Who said what? All those records requests are a burden on that uh, on that communication staff that we have. So she really emphasized that. And I think, you know, everybody here gets a chance to listen to what she has to say. Because I think it's something we're going to have to address uh this coming year. So, thank you.
Anybody else have dispatches?
There's three down, two dispatchers, the sheriff said.
They're working twelve-hour shifts in that little room, the people that are doing it. You got to sit there for twelve hours.
Doug, on that alum treatment, uh, Senator Ray Board, uh, they assessed each property owner ten thousand dollars for uh for alum treatment and I believe there's three hundred and eighty-some property owners. I think they spent over a million dollars. Anybody else have anything? Booters down. All in favor?